Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. Please rise for a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry? And Chairman Savoni?
Here, thank you. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, all items except for L?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Is Ms. Sibley here? Would you like to come up and get sworn? You've been reappointed to the Historic Properties Commission. Thank you for your service. All right, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Onto the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Question through the chair to the mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you've talked about, and even last night, about ARPA money being just for businesses and people and so forth, not-for-profits. You said that's the way the law was set up. That's, pretty much that's what you said. Agreed?
If I heard correctly, you said not for...
No, it was set up for not-for-profits, for businesses and for individuals. That's what you were saying.
The law... And municipal government, but all of them are part of it.
Right. But I know that's what you believe. I mean, many people don't. As you can see, many communities across the state and across the country aren't spending the money that way. But just so you're aware, since the law passed, I think it was March of 2020, there's been numerous additional laws passed to help out small businesses, to help out not-for-profits, to help out individuals, and there's laws still in the House of Representatives of the United States that passed last week that are now in the Senate to make more rounds of more money available. If the ARPA money was just for them, why would they be making all this additional money available? It's because the ARPA money was available for a wider swath of people than... And I understand you disagree, but that's why there is a great sum of money coming, an additional money's coming. Some of the money that's coming from Congress is for mental health issues, schools, small businesses, restaurants. I see. You have the consultant here tonight. I'm sure that he could elaborate on some of the additional programs that are coming down the pike. So I just hope the council keeps that in mind tonight, that the people of Wallingford also are some of the people that were harmed by COVID, and hopefully some of the money will come to the town and help out the citizens of Wallingford. Thank you.
Anyone else? Another turn, Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Last night at the meeting, budget hearing, the police department and Public Works both spoke of how they could use additional personnel. Through the mayor, through the chair to the mayor, is it too late to add additional dollars to the budget to aid those departments? Because as we all know, well, we all don't, but many people have commented on the condition of Wallingford, that some things need some loving care and attention. And we all read the newspaper about the thefts for catalytic converters and young adult crime and so forth. With a beefed-up police department, some of these things could have more attention added to. Is it too late to add these to the budget, to really make the citizens of Wallingford feel safer and have the town look nicer?
I have two responses. One is that the departments did not request additional as part of their budget. So that's one point. The second point is if we are to provide more money to those departments, then other departments should receive less. Because I don't think it's in the interest of everyone to increase the taxes beyond what we're suggesting.
You were here last night, and as I was here and most of the councillors were here, that both those departments said if they had the opportunity, they could use the additional workers, employees, whatever, police officers, whatever you want to call them. And yes, nobody likes to pay more in taxes. But for public safety, I don't think people, for a few dollars more per month, would argue for safer streets, safer when you go home at night, not worrying about your cars, and those types of things are an issue. I would just hope that you would take that into consideration. Also, if you're innovative with your ARPA money, you can use some of that money to offset some of your expenses and buy things, as you did last night, Mr. Mayor, with Public Works. You bought two capital items, or proposed to buy two capital items out of the ARPA money. If you bought more things out of the ARPA money, you could move that money to another line item, and that would be a way of paying for some of these. Consultants here, I'm sure he could second that. I mean, you could do whatever you want with the ARPA money. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands, I close the public question and answer period and move on to item six, which is to hold a public hearing to consider an act to repeal Article III of Chapter 62, alcoholic beverages of the code of the town of Wallingford, to be repealed in its entirety for the benefit of those here for that purpose. The article referenced really just limits hours on Sundays where local establishments can serve alcohol. And the current event, the current version of the ordinance limits the sale of alcohol in Wallingford from 12 noon to 11 p.m. Actually, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. The proposal from the ordinance committee is to repeal that. Is there anybody here for that public hearing? Going once, going twice, going three times, there being none, can I have a motion to repeal Article III of Chapter 62?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, that Article III of Chapter 62, alcoholic beverages of the code of the town of Wallingford, be repealed in its entirety.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Councillor Fishbein.
So, Mr. Chairman, am I to understand that this would just affect the sale of alcoholic beverages in our town for the hour of 10 a.m., Sunday morning through 11 a.m.?
That and in the rest of the state, you can continue to purchase in a restaurant beyond 11 p.m. I think it's to 1 a.m.
Okay, so that would extend...
An hour in the morning and two hours at the end of the day.
Okay. You know, I'm going to share basically what I shared at the ordinance committee meeting. You know, I'm sensitive to this issue. You know, not so much the late-night situation, I got that. But, you know, there's no member of the public here, it appears, in favor of drinking Sunday morning, 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. And I'm sensitive to the issue because about a year and a half ago, a very close friend of mine was killed by a drunk driver. That individual has been charged with some various serious crimes, and she still hasn't been convicted, but it's pretty clear that she was quite drunk. And you know, we balance needs a lot of times. And there's an aspect of this that is, you know, people are free to make their own decisions. If they choose to get sloshed at 10 a.m. on a Sunday morning, that's their choice. When the activity negatively impacts other families, I got a problem with that. You know, this young man served a couple tours in Iraq. He was in law enforcement. He had a daughter. Sad. So I understand what we're doing here. I once again don't see the need. I don't know that I can vote on this unbiased. Not that I'm going to recuse myself or anything like that, but, you know, if I do choose to vote against this, I don't know that I'm actually voting for the initiative or I'm voting for my friend, his family. So I just wanted to make that clear. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Fishbein, I am incredibly sorry for the loss of your friend and the tragedy that extends to his family. What caused his life to end was drunk driving, and that is illegal no matter what time of day. And I suspect will continue to be, and that is the part of the law that we are certainly not going anywhere near, as we have no authority to do so. If somebody wants to start drinking at a restaurant at 10 a.m. on a Sunday or keep drinking past 11 p.m. on a Sunday, all they have to do is drive to Durham, North Haven, North Bramford, Hampden, Cheshire, or Meriden, and they can accomplish the same objective. So I think this is about giving local businesses the same opportunities that businesses in surrounding towns have. Anyone else from the council? Councillor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little history. So as it turned out, and I didn't realize it, that Wallingford was more restrictive than the rest of the state. And Councillor Tada, in our ordinance meeting a couple, a month or so ago now, had asked for the history of the minutes to the best that our law department could put together in our court's office to figure out how did we end up here. So to the best of, you know, my review, it appeared that that Wallingford had certain restrictions, and as the state would adjust, the town would more or less adjust again to meet it. And at some point, that stopped quite some time ago. And I didn't know that this was a thing until a couple restaurant owners and managers approached me. And it just seemed like it should be fair to let the town just be on the same level as everybody else. I thought, I knew about the restrictions, the 10, or 11 to 11. I thought that was a state thing. I didn't realize it was just a Wallingford thing. So that's where all that came from. Thanks.
Seeing no other hands up here on the council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmady?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Motion passes. The ordinance is repealed. Onto item seven, which is discussion action on a motion to authorize the rebidding of the community pool project. Councillor Testa, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure. I thought about making a motion and what that motion would really do would simply be again an expression of the will of wishes of the council, because we can't literally authorize this. But I want to just bring this up. We've, it's time to talk about it again. We've, it's time to talk about it again. It's gone on long enough. My position is really very simple. It has not changed from when I voted to approve this project almost two years ago. I feel very strongly that we should complete the project as it was designed. If there are minor variations due to a rebidding, then that's okay. But I felt strongly we should do the project then. I feel very strongly that we should do the project now, and I want us to go forward with it. How we achieve that, how that happens, we can discuss that among ourselves and with the administration. But I feel very strongly that this project should be done. I also feel very strongly that I do not want to see it whittled down. That's happened in the past to projects, or attempts have been made. We all, as a, as a council, as a, the committee that worked on this park and rec, a very large margin, decided that that was the project we wanted to see. What, what tends to happen is when, when things don't go the way we want, people then say, well, geez, I, I want to get something. I want to get something, so what can we get? And then you start accepting less than what you felt was appropriate at the time. And frankly, there's only one person that was against doing this, and that is the mayor. And he's made his points perfectly clear. But that doesn't, that to me is not justification to change the project or settle for less. We need to push for this and to get it done. And we had the means to do it when we voted for this. We have the means to do it now, and that is to rebid the project, get it done, and bond it the way we were going to. Now, I know there are some people that want to use ARPA funds for this. We can have that argument. I'm not in favor of that because I feel there's other more, more important things we could do with that money, and this project was approved to be bonded. Last year, I managed to get agreement to set aside, or two years, whatever, set aside a million dollars just to, you know, as a, as a, more or less a statement of commitment on this. So we already have a small down payment set aside in a fund. If it was felt by my colleagues that a portion of ARPA money could be allocated to this project in a similar manner, let's say, for example, to offset the inevitable increase in the price, then I wouldn't fight that. You want to say, whatever, pick a number. I wouldn't object to that because my objective here is to get community pool, the community pool project done, the way it was designed, as complete as it was designed, and without any further delay. So I will make a motion that we, I can only, I guess I can only say we request, we request the administration to authorize the rebidding of the community pool project based on what the committee and the Park and Rec Commission has been asking for, so that we may review this and consider it a second time.
Second?
Move. Let the discussion go on from there. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table in a second. My question is for the law department or the administration is if this motion does prevail, what impact does this have on the project? I mean, typically, the administration goes out to bid, and we hear about it when it's time to pay for it.
Well, I see it as a request. I think I have stated, I don't think it's a good time to be bidding a large project like this. I think the economy is, is just not supportive. I think I told a reporter, we can't even get automobiles because they can't build them because they can't get important components, et cetera. So, you know, we're, we're not in a time period, if this were more of a necessity, that, you know, that would be one thing, but it's, it's not a necessity. And everyone recognizes that the economy is in chaos, partly because of COVID, partly because of the war in Ukraine, you name it, there's any number of things now. So I don't think it's a good time. You'd almost definitely know that it's going to come in way above what it came in before. And it came in at 7 million, and that was 2 million over what we anticipated at 5 million. So, you know, as money manager, all of us, money managers, I, I just don't think it's an appropriate time to be asking for bids.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly supportive of this, Counselor Testa, and I might want to add to the motion if everyone is okay with that. I know I had brought up a few years ago, doing an RFP to see if we were able to renovate the pool as it is rather than a complete demolition. And I think if we're going to go back out to bid, I might want to also add that either a bid to renovate or an RFP to renovate. And my rationale is not that I'm opposed to the pool project as it is, but if it were to come in much more expensive than we can afford, which is a possibility, then at least we have a backup plan. So I think we just, at this point, need to have all the data. So I think we're left with three choices at this point. We forget about the pool, demolish it, and we have no more pool. We renovate what we have, and we don't know right now if that's even possible. It may not be possible. Somebody may say that's, we're not able to do that. But maybe they say you can do it, and it costs $4 million. We don't know yet. Or we go with the new project, which we, you know, we'll find out how much that costs at the present time. So I just think it's smart to know all of our options before we make a decision. And if we're going to go through with this, with rebidding it, I just think it's a good time to also look at that, just so we have all the information, we can finally make a decision and decide which of the three options is best. So I don't know if I, we need to amend the motion, but I might want to do a friendly amendment, if that's okay with you, that in addition to rebidding, we also bid or issue an RFP to see the cost of renovation.
Is that to me? A little unsure of the semantics here. The, the project that we approved is a renovation. So with all due respect, I will not welcome an amendment to my motion along those lines. I wouldn't welcome another motion, but now my motion's very clear. I want this project done the way we said it was going to be done. Mr. Mayor, the reason prices are going to come in higher is because you vetoed the project. This project would be done today. We'd be opening this pool this summer. We would be finished with this. Okay? That's why it's going to cost more, because we held off on it. The economy is never good enough for anything when we're talking about spending money. I understand that. I appreciate your conservative views on things. But this whole council wanted this done, and we approved it, and it should have been done. Now, we can make excuses from now until forever. But frankly, and with respect, Counselor Tada, we can have a three or a four-way or five-way motion, the mayor's not going to implement any of it from the sound of it. So I don't think this is going to go anywhere, but I think what this is, is an opportunity for everyone to be heard. Let's take a stand. Let's let the people of Wallingford know where we are on this. There's another election coming in a year and a half, and sooner or later, there won't be somebody that's going to just say no to this. So who's going to say yes? Now's the time to be counted on this. If it takes another two years, so be it. But I'm here to say, I'm not giving up on it.
And you're also clearly communicating that you're not accepting the amendment as a friendly amendment. Okay. All set for now?
So I understand we're not accepting the amendment for now. I just want to, I just want to explain further. When I say renovate, what I mean is, we've never been told definitively, can we fix what we currently have? And I want people to understand, while the, the new project, I'm not saying I'm against it, it may not be affordable with ARPA money, without ARPA money. If the bids come back in and they're $17 million, I don't think we can do it. And so then, if we get those bids in and it's not affordable, then we have no pool, and then we're done. So if at the same time, we already have people bidding, they're pool experts, they're already bidding on a new pool project, we have them also bid to fix up what's currently there. And then maybe that comes in at $3 million, and we say, well, we can't afford the new one. It was great, it was a great idea, but we can't afford 17 million. But maybe we can afford 3 million. So maybe we end up with a pool. Because I think if we go out to bid and it comes out way too high, then we're done. That was just the rationale for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. May I?
I'll come back to you.
I could accept that.
Oh, wait a minute. Did you just accept the same amendment that you had rejected?
Yes, vehemently, apparently. But no, I liked the way it was worded the second time.
So you accept the amendment, and does your seconder accept the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I have to admit, you know, that cliche, if I only knew now what I didn't know then, or something like that, comes to mind because when we had the override of the veto, I think if I had voted differently, I think the, I'm being told it would have been the same, but I thought it was, it was very close. Anyway, since the veto, spent a lot of time thinking about this, speaking and thinking about vision, thinking about where we've gotten over the last 10 years. And I look around town, and I mean, there's not many places that are kept up, that I can readily think of. People talk about, you know, coming to our town, they talk about the downtown. Sure. And that's private investment in private property. But what has the town done to improve those facilities? So if I knew then that we still wouldn't have this project, I probably would have voted differently. And I've come to learn that the only way that this project can happen is if we do it. It's the only way. It's not going to happen otherwise. The million dollars that was appropriated last year in the budget can't go anywhere because you need the administration to make the recommendation. It's not going to happen. I wasn't happy with the plan that we ended up with. We learned through the discussions that the plan process was faulted. Our vision, I think, was constrained because an artificial cap was put on the project that we had no input on. We initially talked about an exercise area for senior citizens, and I've brought this up a ton of times. The first plans we had had this area, and I said, yeah, I see that in Florida, it's a great thing. And that got my buy-in. But as the project got shrunk and the numbers got shrunk, that was one of the things that died. The pool got smaller because we were told that, you know, no other town has pools, you know, anything like what we had talked about. We also talked about if we had one more lane on the pool, that we could have competitions So the plan itself was handicapped to begin with. So now that we're here, and there is no prospect under the current scheme to have a pool done, certainly not this year, and I don't know that there's any vision to have it done next year, there's plenty of time. But once again, the only way it can happen is if, if we do it. I think at some level, we have to start fresh. Because, you know, what I heard, the initial motion tonight is basically a resolution. We resolve that the administration should put the property back out to bid, but we've heard it's not going to happen. So it's an exercise in frustration, and that's what leads to the ascent on the motion. So if potentially we're going to have something like looking at what's there, we also have a chance to look at doing this project properly the first time. So building on, because am I to understand procedurally that there's been an acceptance of this motion?
The amendment?
Yeah, the amendment.
Was accepted and seconded.
Okay. So I would build upon that. That was my intent initially. But I think we need some sort of committee to oversee, make recommendations. So I would build upon the motion that's presently before us to have the council create a committee with each member of the council having an appointment. Now, we can choose to appoint ourselves or someone else who we feel has expertise in this area, that the committee would have the ability to interview and select an architect, to recommend the selection of the architect to this body, to recommend a timeline for the architect's renderings, to recommend a project scope, and to appropriate $8 million from the ARPA funds for the community pool project. Because that's the only way that this can happen. We would have all of the control, and I, I motion to amend the motion that's on the table. And I don't know if Counselor Testa and Counselor Carmody would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Waiting to hear.
He would not because I, I see where you're going. I don't necessarily agree that we can do what you think we can do. I'm sure you think or feel otherwise. I also don't, even if we did, we've already, we already spent, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands on the design. We have a committee that's worked on this for years. They exist. They don't, why wouldn't we just use what they've done? And apparently, you've seemed to think there's a way we can authorize the expenditures in order to achieve this. I don't think that requires starting from scratch. We can just say, we're going to pay the bill for those people that are already there. Let them go. I mean, it's there. All they got to do is put it back out to bid. You can give them a few more guidance, a little more guidance if you want.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe the answer to the question is there's not a friendly amendment, so I, I will continue. You know, part of this is the vision, and the vision is originally presented, is not the vision that we ended up with. And we can do this. It's the, as I said, it's the only way it can happen because we are in charge of funds that are gifted, granted to the town. So, you know, if, you know, and I don't necessarily want to have to go down this road, but, you know, if there's, you know, we have the ability to hire somebody to put a bid document together. We're, we have the ability to use that money to hire our own legal counsel to deal with some sort of conflict that there may be. I mean, we have total autonomous control over the expenditure of those funds. And I share the vision of having this pool, but not, and I was against the pool that came to us because of how it diminished, and I, I think you can recognize that that plan significantly diminished over the process that we were not part of. We didn't have appointments to that committee, and I would like to share that initial vision. So that's, that's the intent here. You know, your, the motion as it presently sits would only have to do with an RFP for renovation. It doesn't advance the current pool project. It doesn't advance the current pool project at all. I'm looking, you know, perhaps an architect comes back and says, I've reviewed these, these plans, this makes the best sense for this area. But there's so much that we can do with this area. We originally talked about hiking trails in, in the back of the area, you know, I had spoken about, you know, there's adjoining properties that were for sale in, in the rear of, of the property. There's so many different things that we can do, but to be constrained with a project, that just isn't going to happen if you leave it in someone else's hands? That's not vision, but with all due respect. So that's the intent. So, you know, under the item, I guess I can make the motion separately, but I'm looking to have this project completed, something that we can all be proud of. So I'm done it now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just to, so I understand, I want to make sure Counselor Testa, I understand what the underlying intention of your motion was. So we had a pool committee, it's part of the Park and Rec Commission. They came to us with a proposal two years ago. That's the one that was, was approved by the council and then vetoed ultimately. That's the project that you want to rebid?
Correct. And they've made multiple attempts to meet with the mayor to talk about putting it out to be rebid, and every one of those meetings apparently gets canceled and doesn't happen. But they're prepared, this is, I mean, they've handled this for years. They're prepared to handle this for us, do their job. They just need us to authorize it and, and fund it. And I'm, you know, I'm certainly going back and forth right now with Counselor Fishbein's approach. I see where he's going. I believe where he wants to go with this. But I'm, I'm still sticking with what I started with. I don't think there's any lack of vision. There's a project, for goodness sake. I don't know, when he talks about vision, that's different from what we originally approved. I don't know where he's going with that, but I can understand the argument that that may be, I don't think it is, but that may be the only way to force this forward at this particular point in time. And that's, that's, that's a discussion and, and an argument that I, I welcome having, but not at the expense of the one I'm, I'm proposing at the moment. Thank you.
Counselor Marone.
So, a point of information, Mr. Chairman. So this Counselor Fishbein made a motion.
He proposed an amendment.
Proposed an amendment. So don't we need to vote on the amendment?
He can seek a second for the amendment. There was no second to the amendment.
Oh, okay, fair enough. All right, so here's my concern. I'm sort of torn on this topic, right? Because the mayor's correct, the economy is not, is certainly not in good shape, and materials and shipping and so on is, is going to appreciate the cost of the project, right? So I liked the plan as presented before. I liked it because I thought it was a compromise between what, you know, what we could do and what was sort of reasonable for a town of our size. But I think as sort of Counselor Testa noted, there's, there's a cost of waiting, right? And so if we wait further, the costs aren't going to get any better. I think we have this impression that maybe, you know, the economy's especially bad because of everything that's going on in the world. There's no guarantees that this ever gets better. I mean, you know, the, at some point, you know, wages rise, the economy, we've had double-digit inflation for two years, so I don't think we could say that in three years, you know, the economy's going to be any better, that if we wait, you know, ironically enough, had we done the project before, it is the cheapest that it's ever going to be, right? So I guess my major concern is this is a park. So if there was another plan presented, as in we don't want it to be this park, we didn't want it to be a pool, we wanted it to be something else, then I would say, you know, well, perhaps that made sense in the context. But we haven't heard any alternatives, so we're sort of just letting this park fallow, right? No one can use this as a park currently. So that's my main concern, is we have a plan that was presented that I thought was reasonable at the time. I realize that the cost went up, the idea was to bond it, so it's not like we're paying for it all at once. I sort of like Counselor Fishbein's idea of using the ARPA money towards it as a way to, to advance the project. We've set some money aside, you know, in the last budget, $1 million, I believe, to work on the project, although we can't do anything with that money, so that's sort of, you know, locked up in the, in limbo for right now. We spent some good money to get the, the architect, to get the plans together, and so to just let it fallow just, you know, sort of rubs me the wrong way. I think that we need to either decide, if you don't want a pool, then it's got to be something else, right? Or sell the property, or do something, you know, sell it to a developer, do something with it. But I think to just let, let it sit there idle is sort of like the worst of a bunch of options. So I'm certainly behind Mr. Testa's motion. I think if, even at the, whatever the inflated cost is, I like the idea, bid it out again, see what happens. If the bids come back, you know, with a ridiculously inflated amount, then move on to something else. But I think we need to come up with some sort of a plan. You know, we can't forever say in this, well, it's too expensive, but maybe, you know, maybe later it'll, it'll be better. Because it's, it's never better, right? We've had, this is just one of the examples of the cost of, of waiting. So we have this, the other parking lot, not to, you know, beat a dead horse, but we have the other parking lot on Wallace Avenue that we're going to rebid, and guess what? It's going to come back higher. We know it's going to come back higher, right? Because everything is worse. So, you know, the, I guess we can't continually wait and expect things to get better. Sometimes you just need to bite the bullet, you know, and if we think the project's worthwhile, then we, then we just get it done. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Allenson.
So I'm, I'm for the community pool. I believe it's an important part of the community. I would vote yes on the motion as presented. I would not vote yes on a motion as Counselor Fishbein has presented. First of all, because we have an ARPA committee and we're constantly reminded that we have no authority. So when we have a pool committee, we will be constantly reminded of the same. So I would say that a committee is not going to really help move anything along. I also find it interesting that people who haven't attended the ARPA meetings have a lot of ideas on how to spend the money, but yet haven't ever come to the committee and told us about it. And now I'm hearing $8 million being kicked around when we only have 13, and we're going to talk about that as the next item here. So basically, I'm, I'm not for creating any new committee. I'm for the, the motion as presented. I'm a little tired of hearing that committees have no authority, but then us wanting to create more committees, because essentially, we have to hear it all again anyways at all of the council meetings, and I see a lot of people in here for the ARPA agenda item, most likely. And I look forward to hearing all of your feedback as we present how we've come, how far we've come so far, and as we talk to the consultant more. But I don't think it would be wise to appropriate any dollar amount, any specific dollar amount from ARPA until, first of all, we were to get a bid back and understand exactly how much that is going to be, because there is a possibility that it may not be as bad as we think it is, although the fatalist opinion of Mr. Marone, Counselor Marone, everything does always seem to get worse, especially in prices and taxes. It, it is true, but we do need to move this along because we're not going to see the prices come back down. Once people get used to paying something, that's how much it is now. And if you want to do a renovation, that's how much you're going to pay in the future, and it's going to keep going up. So thank you, Counselor Testa, for bringing this forward. I do want to just say, I do understand and appreciate the mayor and his conservative, his conservative knowledge of the town and also his want to be conservative. I don't think that this is something that could have been foreseen, and although it may seem like I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm agreeing completely, I don't agree necessarily with the vehemence of some of the comments. I think that the mayor does what, what he feels is best for the town, and we do what we feel is best for the town. And there are 10 of us, 12, 13, that are in here all the time together, and we all work hard. So thank you for that. And that's all from me.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I don't support a new committee or starting over. We had a really good committee of good people. I don't think we would be able to appoint anybody better or with better intention. I do support the rebid if, for nothing else, as a benchmark to where we are. And, and as predicted about two years ago, in hindsight, the, I mean, the first bid went out before COVID, so we had pre-COVID prices as the scary pandemic was beginning. The best time would have been to rebid, as we talked about, right away and, and jump on that. And that's, two years ago, what I favored. In hindsight, it, it would have been ideal. It didn't work out that way, and I don't blame anybody else for not sharing the same stance because there was a lot of uncertainty. But again, thank you, Counselor Testa. I do support some sort of rebid, picking up where our committee left off. And again, if nothing else, we'll have a benchmark to where we are now from where we were. Thanks.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committees only have the power that they are given. Subcommittee's are subs of the basic committee. The ARPA committee was given no power, no charge that was approved by this body. In fact, the ARPA committee is even violative of the majority-minority statute because it is comprised of, it's not a one-third, two-thirds appropriation by party. It has no authority, just to address one of the comments that I heard. You know, where we are here at this point is I think there's a collective understanding that a lot of us would like to see a nice pool in our town. I agree that another committee can be cumbersome, but in the interest of compromise and willing to, to get rid of that, I think appropriately, to Counselor Tata's suggestion that I, I've shared from the beginning, I mean, this, the current facility could easily be converted into a skate park if you really wanted to do it. But I think our vision has been a pool. So the question is, do we have the ability, which we have a lot more ability and power than you would recognize, to have the project rebid as well as an RFP for the possible renovation of what's currently existing there, under the auspices of the project itself being paid for with the ARPA funds? In that way, we've earmarked a certain amount of money. Should we decide that whatever the project that we previously approved came in at a level, let's say 7.5, we choose to go with that, at least we have the money to pay for it. If we don't, it's an exercise in futility. But then if you appropriate that money and the renovation comes in at something like 1.75 or 2, then we can cross that bridge. We obviously have, we have the money. If we do this quick enough, because of the timeline on the, the ARPA projects, when we have to pay for and contract for those things, we have plenty of time to fall within that. Because when I do watch the ARPA meetings, and I didn't watch all of them, one of the things I learned. So procedurally, I guess I make a motion that the town council puts out to bid.
Well, there's a motion on the table that hasn't been resolved yet, so your motion's premature.
Okay. I make a motion to amend.
Okay.
The, the current motion, because we already have in the motion to have the RFP, to, to add to that, putting out the prior project to bid.
That's, that's the underlying motion.
No, no, the underlying motion was to request of the administration that they put it out to bid. It's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we put it out to bid.
You're saying that the council?
Yes.
Bid the project. Okay. So...
With the anticipation that it's going to be paid for with ARPA dollars, because that's the only way this project can happen.
So the, the council does not employ the purchasing department?
So we can go hire somebody who was willing to do that on the side, or we can take the prior document and white out the dates and insert new dates and take money from ARPA and put it in the newspaper. That's how, if you really want to play the game, we can get this done.
For all of the criticism the town gets about technology, we have an online bidding portal.
Understood.
We have a process in town to collect bids. It's run by the administration. I'm not sure where the council is going to get funds to hire somebody to manage our bidding process.
From the ARPA funds, just like we use the ARPA funds to hire the gentleman sitting in the seat in the audience tonight. That is a consultant. There is nothing that stops us from hiring an individual akin to the consultant to put out the document to bid.
We didn't originate the relationship with the consultant. That came through the administration.
As a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think, I think there is not the authority to spend the ARPA money without the administration. It requires both the council and the administration to be making that judgment.
When did the legal department render that decision?
I believe that's the opinion of the legal department.
Has that, has that been rendered to writing? When did we, when did we?
March 21st.
Did you, I, I didn't see that.
You all got it, right?
Okay.
It was sent to, it's sent to the town clerk, who then sends it to all members of the council.
So if we would like to hire our own attorney to challenge that?
You have the authority to hire an attorney if you wish to, if the council wishes to do so. So it's our position that this would be, be an appropriation over the total budget, therefore requiring both of you to agree.
An appropriation over the total budget?
Yeah, this is, this is extra money. This is, these are extra tax dollars that are provided, and then that's the category it falls into, in our opinion.
In your opinion, and that clause doesn't appear anywhere in the charter.
Yes, it does.
No, it talks about the gifts or bequests.
Okay, you're in that section. We don't, we don't view that to be the section that controls it. That section doesn't agree, doesn't exist in a vacuum. It doesn't exist by itself without the remainder of the charter, and that's how we view these funds. That's our opinion.
Okay, March 21st, you emailed that? I'll, I'll take a look. So procedurally, with regard to the motion, I, I made a motion to amend, and I don't know the status, because we're going back and forth.
Well, you need a second.
Is to add to the present motion, the rebidding of the prior project as approved by this body with the anticipation of the project being paid for by ARPA funds.
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I, I think it's premature. It's not necessary. And there's all, there are all social questions. I'm going to step back for a moment, if I may. And, Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I assumed more than I should. I made a motion, and you made yourself clear that you really think this is a bad time to do this. However, you did not say you were, would not approve rebidding it. And I, my motion is to formally request that you do that. Is that something you would be willing to do without making? be willing to do without making any kind of commitments to going through with the project? Because it gets us down the road.
I, I think we need to solve the ARPA before I'm willing to take on what can be a very expensive project with belief that maybe there's funds from ARPA and maybe not. We need to get the applications out, find out what the need is from the community, and then have an idea, is there a financial windfall, basically, that could be used for this project? Certainly, that can be argued to absorb the increased impact of the economy and everything else. But, you know, without, without knowing exactly what's going to happen on the ARPA, I don't know how we discuss the, the issue of putting out a pool that, that could come in at, well, I'm not even going to use figures, but with the expectation, some may think, oh, yeah, they've got ARPA money. We may not have any ARPA money for that.
Well, but could we at least bid it? Rather than, I'm not even talking about how we're going to pay for it. Because the discussion of how we may or may not pay for it is going to be ongoing concurrent to our discussion about any different ways we might use ARPA funds. But at least now, if you, if you authorize the bidding, three months from now, we'll have a better idea of what the pool would cost. And then we could argue then, that's, we still can't do it. Or how are we going to pay for it? Can we at least bid it?
I have concerns about having an argument over the ARPA that could take away money from people who need it in order to put in a pool.
Oh, that's, I'm not, I'm not in favor of using ARPA.
That's what will happen. I hear the conversation here. That's what will happen. And I don't think that that should be a, a measure that would potentially reduce money that would be available to people who need the help from federal government, state government, local government in order to make it through what we all know to have been a difficult time. So, I, I just think we need to deal with the ARPA and get the applications. Hopefully, they'll be approved. They can go out. The consultant has a portal. We can get an idea of what the need is, and then we can start talking about how the ARPA money gets divided up. But if we go out with this and we're looking at, now there's suddenly a balancing of, well, so much for this, so much for that. I really have a hard time saying, oh, the pool is of equal importance to help assisting the people who need the help through the ARPA funds.
If I can help, Mayor, I don't think Counselor Testa disagrees with you about the ARPA funds on the pool.
Yeah, I'm going to clarify myself. I, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm simply, and I didn't even want to talk about ARPA. I'm here to talk about community pool. I simply want the pool project rebid so we have current value numbers. So, we could then talk about, are we going to do this pool at some point? Can we do this pool? Totally separate from the concerns you have, can you just authorize the bid? There's no commitments to that.
But what's going to happen is, oh, we won't make all the decisions on the helping of people who need it because we don't have the bids in yet, and that's a source of money for the pool.
I want to bond the pool.
As long as I'm sitting here, I know that's going to happen, and I don't think that's in the interest of the town responsibly using ARPA funds.
I don't want to use ARPA funds for the pool. I want, I want to bond the pool. Like, I wanted to bond the pool three years ago, two years ago. So, if ARPA money gets, if during the course of the next six months to a year, it turns out that there is a portion of the ARPA funds that can be allocated to the pool, which might ease your concerns about bonding expenses, so be it. I just want to bid the pool. I want us up to date. I don't want to keep putting this off, and I don't want ARPA, concerns about ARPA money to be the newest roadblock. This pool is, is, I made my point. Can we just bid the pool? Let the committee go back out to bid. It's not going to cost much of anything. Let's get current numbers. I think they already know how much it's going to cost. The same architect, the same companies can throw in numbers to us. We can waive anything we want. We can say, you know what? The same people came back with adjusted numbers, and they seem legitimate in the marketplace, so we can work with those. Now, at the same time, we've spent another three months talking about how we're going to handle the ARPA funds, and so on and so forth. We can do more than one thing at one time. I believe we can do that. And I, I just would, I want, I would like us to do that. I feel very strongly that that pool project needs to be done. And we can fight and argue about how it's going to be paid for, but we need to know what it's going to cost. And all I'm simply asking, with all respect, is if the council votes as a unit to request a rebidding of this, can we count on you to do that with no other commitments on your part?
I'm going to repeat what I said. This should not, the ARPA should not be weighed in the balance over whether we do a pool or not. We need to decide on the ARPA. That is the critical issue before the town. Are we going to respond to the needs of people who need help? And it shouldn't be in the context of, well, we've got to have a few of those millions left over because we have the pool. We, we got the price, and, and we don't want to use it all up because, wow, that came in, blah, blah, blah. No. That shouldn't be the fulcrum over which we decide ARPA. We need to get the information in from the public as to what is needed to respond to the need. After that, I'm with you.
I'm not the most articulate person that I know, but I'm okay. I think, I thought I made my question perfectly clear, and it was a yes and a no. And I don't, I really don't understand how I'm not being understood. But this is where we are. You all know where I'm at. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the, I think the reason the ARPA money is coming into play here is because this is the only way that we have control of this happening. If we don't, if we don't put any ARPA money towards this, if we don't set any money aside for this, I think we've heard pretty clearly, this isn't happening. It's not in the next year's budget, which runs into the next pool season. So, that means it's probably this coming summer and the next summer, I would assume. So, it's another two years that we lose. We, you know, I respectfully disagree with the assumption that to assess the community need, that we need to put these applications out. We all know the community need on this. I don't think, since I've been up here, I have received more feedback on any single issue than community pool. I think the community is very clear that they would like this. A, a big chunk of our community repeatedly asks us to get this done. And for those who don't want to use it, or won't ever use it, or think that it's a waste of money, if we're using the ARPA money, at least their taxes aren't going up to pay for it. At least they're not bonding it. They're not paying for those interest payments for 30 years. So, I think we know what the need is for this. I think we'll agree on that. So, I don't, I don't see the harm in spending part of the ARPA money. Not all. It's not all of the ARPA money. Counselor Fishbein mentioned 8 million. Maybe back it down. Maybe you want to say half of the ARPA money. But we have a good chunk of change in there that we, as a council, said, this is where we want this money to go. I think, I'm looking forward to hearing from the consultant on the next item as to who has the authority to, to appropriate that money. I'm certainly not, not a lawyer, but I, my reading of the charter, I, I feel that that's in our, that that's our ability to do so. So, again, whether, whether you want to use the ARPA money later for this, after we send out the applications or before, I think what I'm seeing here is that the only chance we have of getting this done is if we put this money aside. And the only way that we get our hands directly on money is through ARPA. Thank you.
Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't agree with Counselor Tata anymore than what she just said. And I am disappointed in the mayor for not making the commitment to just rebid this project. This is not the way I want or intended for the ARPA money to be spent. But I agree with you that this is the only way this project's going to get done. And so I will be supporting Mr. Fishbein's amendment.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do, I just want to correct myself. I did read this memo when I got it. But I got to tell you, and this is the memo that was referenced before about the position of the law department. This memo really has to do with the standard allowance. That's the way I took it. It was their recommendation on that. Janice, and I don't want to necessarily engage in it, in a back and forth, but I just, you know, looking at the charter, it says that the council shall take by gift-grant bequested or devised stuff for any public use upon such terms and conditions as may be prescribed by the grantor or donor and accepted by the council. So, we can establish that money came under the auspices of ARPA under those constraints. But the clause at the end says, and to provide for the proper administration of the same. It doesn't say in conjunction with the administration. So, the memo doesn't say anything. I mean, it's, it's artful to say that it's an extra budgetary. I got that. But I'm just trying to, there's, there appears to be that that clause is ignored in the memo.
Well, I don't think we're ignoring it. I think we're stating that the proper administration is in accordance with the rest of the charter, and that would place it into the finance section, which calls for it to be an appropriation, which requires both of you to agree. That's our position on that.
Okay. Even though, so the charter is inartfully drafted, it should have referenced other sections of itself.
No, I think it's fine. It's fine as it's written.
Okay. Because it clearly does not say anything about the administration in that, in that sentence. It doesn't say.
Right. It doesn't have to. It's, you don't read a part of the charter in isolation of the rest. And, you know, the financial section is where it talks about how you appropriate money, and that would apply. That's our position.
May I? Attorney Small. As part of our annual budget, we allocate the education, education cost sharing grant. We, we anticipate it coming from the state. We include it in our budget. It's administered just like any other money we get that's tax dollars allocated to us.
Correct.
Is this, are, are you interpreting the charter to say that the ARPA money is something, while we didn't budget for it, we're going to treat it like we would the education cost sharing grant?
It would be along the same lines as that. And therefore, you would be going through an appropriation process, whether it's at the budget time or during the course of the budget year.
Thank you.
That's our position.
Well, that's the practice. That doesn't necessarily mean it's lawful. I mean, I had...
I think it's our position. That is the law. That is the charter. That's, that's what's required under the charter.
I understand the position, but certainly, you know, was it 10 years ago, I proved that the city of Meriden was violating their charter for 20 years? You know, their application of the language was not what the Supreme Court agreed with. So...
Congratulations. I don't know what to say about that.
Well, that was the, well, we're in a case where, you know, everybody was taken out of office. But, you know, just because it's utilized in a certain fashion doesn't make it, because it clearly doesn't say that.
Well, I think the charter actually does talk about, you know, the, the only thing that's really different is that this is just such an unusual money. I mean, it's, it's an unusual program. It's an unusual statute. It's, it's a once-in-a-generation type of a situation. So, to look at it and say, where does it fit? And, you know, it's our position if it's as any appropriation would be, that's not part of, already part of the budget.
When I look at Section 5 of, it's Sub 5 of Section 19, it talks about accounts of the town. So... There's no purchase shall be made on an account of the town except in accordance with. I think that's the portion that you're relying upon.
No.
Section 5F, I believe you referenced.
Right. There is the section that talks about funds over and above the budget.
Yeah.
The appropriation of that.
I'm looking, it says additional appropriations over and above the total budget.
Right.
May be made from time to time by a resolution of the council upon recommendation of the mayor and certification from the comptroller. There is available in unappropriate uncovered general fund cash balance to meet such appropriations.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take it for now. I'll defer. I guess we have a proposed amendment on the table procedurally.
There is. And before I go out to the public, I guess I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment so we know what motion we're talking about when we get public comment. So, as I understand your amendment, it is to rebid the project and to use ARPA funds to complete the project?
Yes. And I think the responsible thing to do would be to state a number so that there's some sort of closure. So, for the purposes of the amendment, which I guess you may start another discussion, I'll say $7 million. And I don't know if...
I was going to say, do I, I'll second that since I was the original.
Okay. This is my motion?
Well, this is...
An amendment to my motion, right?
This is an amendment to your motion.
Amendment to my motion is to...
Rebid the project using $7 million in ARPA funds.
You have to do the RFP as previously.
How?
That already passed, right? That amendment already passed. No.
Can someone answer the question, how?
I'm not sure I understand the question, how. How what?
How can we rebid it? No one has, no one has verified that we can, we can do that as a council. We can't issue a bid. It's not what we do. We keep going back to that. We have all this power. No, we don't. I mean, what, we can't, we can't write a check. We can't say to the committee, call the, call the engineer, call the architect, here's a check for $1,000. Rewrite the bid. We can't do that. You think we can. We can't. And until somebody who's not you, and apparently not, tells me otherwise, I'm not going to vote on this motion because it looks good and it lets the people know that I'm all for community pool.
So, can I? Well, you're only, you're not being called to vote on the whole motion. You're only being called to vote on the latest proposed.
No, I know. But if I vote on it, my motion becomes this with this amendment. That's why I'm trying to get it straightened out.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Oh, please.
We did here tonight that we had the ability to seek our own legal counsel to get involved. So, perhaps it would be prudent of us to do that, to try and get a second opinion on this situation that's unusual, and then proceed accordingly. Because, you know, if we have reason to believe that the administration is incorrect, the law department is incorrect. I mean, they're, they're somewhat in conflict because they represent both of us. You know, maybe that's a way to resolve that. So, it's a suggestion.
What money are you going to spend on that? ARPA money? Where are you going to get the money to hire an attorney?
Contingency.
We, we can't do that.
Yeah, we can't do that. So, I guess...
We can't do that. We can't spend money. I'm saying, no, I'm not going to say, let's go, let's not start hiring outside attorneys to challenge our own legal department. I, I, where's this going?
It's going, it's, we should get an answer. It wouldn't be the first time that.
Okay, no, okay. I'll pull back.
All right. What I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna call the vote on the amendment before we go to public comment so that the public knows what version of the motion we're talking about that remains on the table. So, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll just on the amendment?
Allenson?
No.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
No. With only four ye votes, the motion, the amendment fails.
Chairman, students chairman? Is there, may I make another amendment? Or propose another amendment?
Why don't we just vote on my motion and then you can make more motions? We, no, I'm saying, that might be, no, really, I didn't mean to be a wise guy.
Yeah, no, yeah.
We can welcome, we're gonna be talking about ARPA. You guys can make motions all night. Leave my motion alone.
Apparently, I'm not sure we're gonna bother going to number eight because we can't leave it alone right now. But in either event.
Does the motion, does your motion include the RFP portion or the bid to renovate?
Oh, I accepted that.
Okay.
I accepted that. My mo, and I said, my motion in part is to make a statement to the community, and I think it's important that we do that. And that's why I'm adamant about not changing it up too much. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Counselor Testa, do you think there's a benefit to amending the motion to say with the intent to bond the project? With the intent to bond the project? Or is that too limiting?
No, I don't think it's necessary. Because I said, I'm not approaching this, as I told the mayor. My objective is not to use ARPA money for this.
I agree.
But I'm not opposed to doing that if that becomes a compromise that the council works out and some ARPA money makes its way into this project. So I'm not gonna rule it all out. Right? I believe still strongly that we are well within our powers and we have more than enough strength as a community to do this project the way we originally planned to and use the ARPA, and then use the ARPA money for so many other wonderful things that we can come up with. So, yeah, no, I just wanna, I just wanna get a bid again so I know what kind of money we're looking at. And then I'll take, you know, then I have other ideas. I'll move it to the next level. Thank you.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you. I think that, again, I said it before, and I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of this. I think the mayor made it clear he's not planning on bidding this. So the only way we have any sort of control over this is if we put the money aside. So putting the money aside gets us one step closer. So if it comes in very expensive, which we all assume it's going to, then the administration will likely say, "We can't afford this. We can't afford to bond it. It's too expensive." But if there's money aside that's not taxpayer money, but basically free money from the federal government that we can do something really wonderful for the town, I think that's the only way we have any sort of control over this. And again, I'm looking forward to speaking with the consultant. I know he's stepped outside for a few minutes. But.
Not his time yet.
We can ask him if, you know, how this might work now that the money's set aside. How do we go about doing this? How, again, I just, I think if we don't put any money aside, this is our chance, this is our one chance to put some money aside to go towards this. And I think if we don't do that, I truly think this project is dead. I don't think that it's ever going to be bonded. I don't think that there'll be another opportunity. I think this is our last shot for this. So that's kind of why I'm pushing to set some of the ARPA money aside for this. Thank you.
All right. Comments from the public? We're really only talking about the pool at this point, and ARPA is the next item on the agenda. Name an address for the record, please. Thank you.
Joe Mier, Economic Development Commission. Just as a point of clarification, there is no free money. The ARPA funds is taxpayers' money. The government doesn't make widgets. They produce money from the taxpayers. As far as the pool goes, I'm in favor of a pool as long as it doesn't affect the ARPA funds. I think to commit ARPA funds at this point is premature. If the town feels so strong that we need the type of pool that's been said, fine, I don't have a problem with it. Then the town should put the money aside to pay for it like we do any other project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Of course, I'm an advocate of the pool. I would like to see it get done. I don't have kids in town here, but it's, never did. But it's important for the whole community. It's, you know, mentioning about ARPA and helping businesses and so forth. This pool helps pretty much the whole community as a whole. And I understand, I mean, we're gonna talk about ARPA in a few minutes, but the pool has been there forever. Well, not forever, but for many years. It does help the whole community. And one question for the mayor or the town attorney or even EDCs here. Why doesn't the town go after the Community Challenge Grant for the pool? Mr. Mayor?
We're prefer, I believe the grant that is being sought for the railroad station is the Challenge Grant. If there's another one coming along, anything's possible.
No. They can go for it. They can do whatever they want for their $500,000 or whatever million dol, I assume they're going for $1 million. I think that's what their amount is that they're going for. If you read the Community Challenge Grant, and they're here, so they can correct me if I'm wrong, it could be a parallel grant, meaning you can go for more than one item at one time in this grant, up to $10 million, as other communities have done. The state just awarded this grant the 6th of April. I don't remember the number of communities it went to. Wasn't many. So again, why doesn't, since the town can go after this grant, Mr. Mayor, why doesn't the town go after this grant?
Because we have already applied for a project under that grant. And I'm not, I doubt that the Economic Development Commission would like to see, oh, well, we'll fund the pool rather than the railroad station because there's gonna be a choice for the, whoever awards those grants, they'll choose which ones they want and which ones they don't. So I can't speak for them, but I think we've already applied for that grant and we're waiting to hear the results.
I would have to disagree. The EDCs here. I don't think, I don't see how you've applied for the grant yet because it's not open. Have you applied for the grant? At this time? Make a good answer, Mr. Mayor. They're here. I don't think they've applied for the grant. I don't think it's open right now.
Well, again, their focus will be for the purpose they've stated, to water that down with multiple requests. I can see where they would feel that that is not in their interest as the awarding authorities could choose one versus another.
It might not be in their interest, but it might be in the town's interest because that's one project. This is another project. As you want the money to go for businesses and not-for-profits, there are many people in town that would like to see go for capital projects. So there are parallel choices. And in this grant, you can put them all into the same grant. They can approve, they're going for the minimum dollars. They're going, as far as I understand, they're saying $1 million. So they're actually looking for $500,000.
As you're well aware, that money will be split up amongst multiple communities. It's unlikely that anyone will get as much as they'd really like. So I think they want to maximize their chances of getting an award that will accomplish the purposes that they've spoken to at public meetings and in their own meetings.
The grants that were awarded, and I have them here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, were granted 11, 12. They were all for their amounts that they wanted. Not one, I don't think there was one community that went for the maximum amount, which was $10 million. The biggest grant was $6 million that was given. So these are 50-50 grants. I don't know, we're going over stupid details, but the council should be aware that this is available and why you could use less of the, you could put this out, say, "We're gonna put some ARPA money towards it." Don't have to put the full $8 million. See if you can get this grant. There's multiple times this grant goes up for, it just finished. They're estimating, EDCs here, you can ask them. But I think they're estimating this will be available again in the fall of 2022. That this grant will come up for bid again. By then, you'll have your bids back. You have some numbers. You can put them on paper, and you can put this out for a parallel bid. And you can make this, to what Counselor Fishbein said, you can make this a grand project because you can ask for this money. If you have an idea of what you want to do over there for the elderly, for, you know, the whole community, you can do it. You don't even have to have the pool there. You can move the pool, you can move the pool, say, to Doolittle and redevelop that property as a ballfield active community project. There are so many things. Everything gets pigeonholed in the town here, and nothing gets done. Look at a grant, look at the wide scale. Look at it as being wide open. Money's available. Go for it as these other communities are doing. And get something, make, as we, somebody mentioned tonight, walling for this tarnished. Make it look, make it shine. Right, Mr. Mayor?
I don't agree with you at all.
Well, I know there's always different opinions, but as you drive down the streets or sidewalks and lighting and gazebos and whatever else you want to say, we are lacking comparatively to what other communities have done over the years. Our town has done nothing. Thank you.
Anyone else on the pool? All right, there being no more public comment on the pool, I bring it back to the council for a roll call vote on the motion on the table.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before we vote, I'd like to just, one last time, I was kind of rethinking this as I was listening to the public, propose a friendly amendment. You know, I've given the rationale a few times now, but my understanding is that some of the council seemed to be supportive of setting aside some of the ARPA money, but maybe was not supportive of the of the idea of us being the ones to rebid. And so I just want to try to separate that so that maybe we can keep the support for the one part of that and people don't have to be against the whole thing. So I'd like to add the amount to the motion just to put some backing behind this. Again, I feel like without the money, this doesn't happen. I think that's it. The pool's done. I think that's been made clear from the administration that this isn't anything that they're looking to do anytime soon. With the money there, sitting there, there is a chance that it happens. Maybe it doesn't happen, but there's a much, much better chance that it happens if the money's set aside. We may end up bonding this. So let's put it out to bid. Let's do everything that Counselor Testa suggested we do. We have the money set aside. We get the bids back. We get an RFP back. We look at them. We see the prices. And maybe we say, we don't want, we don't need to use the ARPA money. And that's okay. We still have it just set aside there because this will go pretty fairly quickly because we already have the bid documents. So we're not reinventing anything here. So we'll get them back. We'll look at it. We'll see if we want to use the ARPA money. So at least it just gives us an option. It gives us that leverage to be able to do this. So that would be my suggestion. So again, I'm just gonna make a friendly motion to amend the motion adding that we administer $7 million of the ARPA money towards the project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So the amendment is just to allocate $7 million in ARPA money to the project?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
On the amendment, this is exactly what I was talking about. We're making a judgment on the ARPA money before we even have applications that have gone out to assess the need. So now that money is not available, and we're telling people, well, you know, "We're interested in helping you, but there's something more important, and that's the pool. So we'll divide up $7 million, but we'll keep the remainder for whatever is left." I have a hard time understanding why we would do such a thing, knowing that there are people who absolutely need the money that the government has provided for the purpose of assisting them.
I don't think I have to ask. Counselor Testa, are you accepting that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
There was a motion on the second.
So you don't have to.
We have to vote on it.
Okay. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I could be wrong, but procedurally, I guess they still would have the opportunity to accept it. But I leave that to whatever. You know, in the present budget that's been presented by the mayor, ARPA funds are spent on vehicles. So what I'm hearing tonight is, and I agree, there are people hurting. But you can't have it one way but another way when it does something else. If you preserve the money and say it's all gonna be spent for a certain class of individuals, that's fine, I can respect that. But you can't at the same time propose to use the same money to buy a dump truck in a backhoe. I'm just having a little difficulty justifying that. I mean, procedurally, let's just say that this motion passes and there's $7 million to pay for the pool. There's already $1 million that we put in reserves last year towards the pool. So if you really wanted to, you would just re-categorize that, those funds, to pay for the capital projects that are anticipated in the present budget to be spent for with ARPA funds. That can happen where the administration and the council works together. So I'm just having difficulty dealing with the two philosophies. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Just, just in response, it is, yes, they're public safety items, basically, and I think they deserve that priority, and it's not an enormous, it's not half of the amount of the ARPA money, it's several hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so it is for public safety, and I think that is justified, but to take half of the ARPA, ARPA money and say that's no longer available for, for the determination of, of response to need, I, I don't, I don't think these two equate at all, there's not a different philosophy.
Counselor Laffin?
I do not support allocating any ARPA funds at this time to the community project. Um, I mean, we're fricking, getting emails already from people like, who think they're applying for the money, and I keep writing back saying like, there's a process, we haven't put out any applications out, like, a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's very different than over half of it, $7 million, um, which plus the one is the eight that was discussed earlier, and we all know that we've had so many problems when we talk about numbers so publicly, because then that's what the bids come back with. So, uh, and the, the ARPA spending from the mayor is still out for us to decide, um, either up or down, because we're in budget season now. So I do not support, um, determining at this point the ARPA money. We, this is a project that we would bond, we have a great bond rating, this, this is what we would bond, that's what it's for. Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's do a roll call vote on the latest amendment.
No.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishmine?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Chairman Cervoni?
No. Uh, once again, the amendment fails. With that, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call a vote, please, on the motion on the table? Can we have it read back? Sorry. And, uh, if, if you could, read back the motion with the friendly amendment accepted.
Okay, let's see if I can do that. So Testa's amendment is the project done as designed, correct?
To put it out to bid as designed, and then Counselor Tata's amendment was to...
Then Tata's is to add to the motion the RFP to see about the renovation, is that correct?
Yes.
And the added, and then Fishmine was with the 7 million.
That's failed.
That's failed. Okay, so...
So it was just Testa's motion with Tata's first amendment?
Okay. I'm sorry, I have so many notes, I can't find my beginning.
I believe it was RFP or bid. I'm not sure which way we want to go, RFP or bid for the renovation, depending on... RFP, RFP's fine, I'll stick with that.
That becomes, that becomes two different documents. You may want to, you may want to just change it so that the rebidding includes, uh, consideration of just, oh, you can hear me, you may want to include, um, that the, the rebidding, um, includes, um, base renovation of the existing facility, something like that, rather than specify RFP.
Sure.
Because one's a bid, one's an RFP, now we're two different things.
Sure.
You know, and that would make, seem to make more sense.
Madam Clerk?
So the motion for Counselor Testa is to, oh God, hold on, I just had it. Counselor Testa, would you repeat your bid for, your motion for me?
I'd, I'd be happy to, but I, I got yelled at for using the word request, so, um, nobody objects. I'm going to clarify that, so that my motion is simply, um, I make a motion that we authorize the rebidding of the community pool project based on the original project specifications, and include, um, to also include, um, estimates on renovating the existing facility to usable standards. If I said that the first time, we probably would have been done an hour and a half.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just...
So that was to include Counselor Tata's friendly amendment, which was seconded by Counselor Carmody?
Okay, so to, the motion from, as I can get it, to authorize rebidding of original product, project based on the original, uh...
Previously approved bids.
Previously approved bids, to, and also including, and to rebid, include base renovation of existing facility to...
Right there, you can stop right there. That's it.
That's it, I got it.
Congratulations.
I'm so sorry and embarrassed.
It's all right.
Okay, so I'm good.
You're good, we're good.
I can read the roll call.
Please.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishmine?
Yes.
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Cervoni?
Yes.
Chairman, sorry.
Thank you, the motion carries. Onto item eight, let's talk about ARPA. Mr. Reagan, you want to come visit with us? I, I could understand why you'd approach slowly at this point.
I wasn't sure if staff was going to comment first or not.
By staff, did you mean Attorney Small?
Yeah, or any, anybody on, with the town. I guess...
Attorney Small, we're onto ARPA. And apparently Mr. Reagan wants you to participate.
Apparently he does.
Good question. So I think in front of you, I guess, we, uh, prepared, uh, based on, uh, information that was provided to me by the town, uh, I guess, three different sets of applications, right? One for businesses, one for nonprofits, and one for individuals, that I think were presented to the ARPA committee for their review and comment. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't indicate, um, that this, I'm working now with, uh, over 15 localities around the United States, this is the only locality that is designing an application that will be reviewed and adjudicated for individuals by the government.
We, um, I think we yanked the individual, uh, the three applications were for business, uh, for nonprofit restitution, and then a, a nonprofit project.
Okay, I was unaware of that.
I'm sorry, you...
So the, the individual part was going to be, we were discussing, we wanted to talk to you tonight about the nonprofits actually handling any individual, um, you know, issues, so that...
Yeah, and that's certainly what I'm seeing at other localities.
Yeah, that's, that's what we wanted to talk to you about tonight. We just were...
And I stole somebody's thunder, I apologize for that.
No, it's okay, don't, we're just, there's a lot, there's a lot on the table, we're just trying to...
Sure.
We're excited for you to be here.
If you could just...
You guys should start.
If you could just remind us who you are for the record.
I apologize for that. Jack, J-A-C-K, Reagan, R-E-A-G-A-N, no relation. I'm with, uh, Managing Director with UHY Advisors.
Thank you very much. Counselor Laffin, why don't you bring us up to speed with what the committee has discussed?
So the committee has discussed in, uh, by a vote of four to one, and we are not in violation of the minority rule or legislation, uh, we are a membership of five, it is three Republicans, two Democrats, the rule prohibits more than four of a majority, uh, so we are bent the other way towards, uh, evenness. Um, with a vote of four to one, decided to adjust the drafts that you had presented to us.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, just some minor tweaks, additional kind of follow-up questions, um, adjust the 25 cap on employment, uh, employees for our businesses and nonprofits to 60, but we were, we wanted the council and, and with you here tonight to discuss that. Further, there was some discussion on removing it entirely, and, um, to include and make sure, the summary is that we make sure that we include some things, like, did, um, did you apply for money? If not, why not? If yes, did you get any? If yes, how much? Uh, what are you going to do with it? That, that type of thing. And, and those were already basically there, but we, it was just fine tuning it.
Oh, yeah.
And asking for the, the delta change between, uh, in 1920 and 21, like revenue changes. Um, I believe actually the, including 20 was something that we needed to approve tonight, it was included in our, in our original draft. What we also wanted to talk to you then tonight was, uh, what we want, we want to seek the full council, because the committee, uh, can actually make decisions, we're just...
Right.
Kind of a work group. Uh, get council approval to put that forward, I hope, uh, so that you can move forward with the online portal for applications. The applications were, as I stated, um, one for businesses, one for nonprofit, basically kind of restitution in the same way that a, a business is applying, and another was for a nonprofit, a project or program.
Right.
Um, and then really, any of the, the project and programs, um, that may be proposed would be, would handle the individual issue.
Right.
Um, that the nonprofits would, would, they already have a connection to the community, uh, pulse on what's going on, that they would, uh, hand out the money to any of those people that requested it.
Did the committee have any discussion about a cap on the amount of the request?
The, um, a temporary, uh, kind of a minimum, I guess, a floor, and let me just pull up my, my notes, I've been talking this whole time.
I guess one of the comments I've got on that, if you're not going to cap the request from the applicant...
The cap on individual requests?
Uh, business requests?
Right. We didn't, uh, that's... On the application request, we did not discuss that at this, at that stage.
And then it's imperative that the, um, the process, in my opinion, be, remain open for the entire period without any application getting approved or denied. We clearly saw under CARES Act, when programs were set up, when, let's say there, it's a million dollar program, that there was a race to the front of the queue to make sure that you got your application in before the million dollars ran out. That is not an equitable way of distributing any of these funds, and what will end up happening if, if we don't do something like that, we're going to repeat that same process. So I, I would certainly encourage, uh, the town to consider keeping an application window open for 30 days to 60 days. We will certainly review the applications as they come in to determine their allowability and their adherence to the program guidelines that the town has established, but I would encourage the, um, the town to not formally approve anything until the end of the application period, so that everybody is getting on an equal footing, whether they were, uh, submitted on day one, or they submitted on day 30 or 60, whatever the last day of the, the application window is. That is, uh, I think, an equitable way of doing it, uh, while taking some lessons learned from CARES Act.
No, totally makes sense, um, and the, uh, and that goes along with the other component where we were working on the applications to get the drafts considered, and then to reach this point, and then discuss the, your recommendations, or what you see other municipalities are doing with the actual allocation, who is doing it, who's sitting on these review boards, or whatever. Um, the idea being that we know that it will take time for the application to get processed and put online, and that will give us the appropriate amount of time to assemble this group, trying to keep all the balls moving in the air at the same time. Um, but, so that ties into the, the, um, application window.
Sure, so in, in terms of the composition of the group that will be performing the governmental function of approving the, the applications, let me take a step back. Uh, again, I think it's a two-step process, once the application process is opened, we review, UHY, your consultants, will review to make sure that there are, uh, the projects are allowable under ARPA, and then that, um, all the information is there for the committee or whoever is going to be doing the adjudication, that it's a complete package for you to be able to do the evaluation, so that you're not wasting your time on anything that's not allowable or incomplete. Um, in terms of the composition of that review committee, I've seen it several different ways. I've seen it, uh, predominantly staff-driven, who will come back to the full council, is one option. Um, it would, I've seen, uh, a subcommittee of the council that reviews the applications that come in.
Do you mean, are these all town councils, legislative bodies, or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, I've seen other options as well, where depending on the size of the project, um, the council has delegated the authority to be able to approve those below a certain dollar amount to the administration, above a certain dollar amount, they have to go back to, um, council for approval. I've seen in, in, uh, you know, one of your, your sister governments here in, in Bristol had a group of outsiders, had a, a 15-member ARPA committee, made up of community members, uh, they broke into three different, um, well, 14 committee, or 14 community members in the mayor, and, uh, they broke into three different subcommittees, one to consider not-for-profit projects, one to consider business projects, and one to consider municipal projects. And so you, you have options on how you want to set that up. I happen to like the way, candidly, that Bristol did theirs, by getting community members to participate, uh, because there is a, a huge element of civic engagement, trying to gauge, um, you know, what the community wants in these, to have some community members sit on a committee like that to do that sort of review and adjudication of the applications, they make recommendations that are adopted then by council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that is where we were, and then we're looking for the council to discuss, ask their questions further, other consultant, Attorney Small, and then hopefully the council will make a decision on the applications, and whether we want to decide on the adjudication part tonight, or kick that to the subcommittee in between while the applications are being processed to people on the portal.
If I may add one other, one other comment, which is, if, um, the town chooses not to put in a cap on the amount for any project, and you're really just truly trying to solicit, um, information and ideas, you will get some very, very large asks. Um, and again, just by way of, of reference, in Bristol, uh, Bristol received over 140 applications worth $84 million for $29 million worth of funding. So, uh, I will very inelegantly say, the racking and stacking of those projects, and the, you know, the ultimate adjudication to get that narrowed down to the amount that are funded, is, um, an extraordinarily difficult and time-intensive project, process.
Counselor Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and that's precisely why I was hoping we put the pool money aside first, because I can see that if we send these applications out, this money's gone with these applications. Um, I've said it before, so I don't need to keep saying it, but, um, I have some questions, I, I hope I can do them kind of rapid fire, because I don't want to take everybody's time here, but, uh, the first question, is any town sending out applications with no dollar amount predetermined that you're working with?
No dollar amount predetermined, yes. I mean, there, there are folks that are sending stuff without caps.
Okay, and that's just the process you were just describing?
Yes.
How to deal with that? Okay, so when Bristol got back well over their, the amount they have, what, how did they deal with that?
So they developed a set of guiding principles that they would use to evaluate the applications that came in. Uh, the guiding principles were around, the word was transformational projects. So it was very much, they, they came at this with a, very much a forward-looking investment in the community and in the future perspective. Uh, so projects that were going to touch the most people in the community were thought of as more transformational than projects that might affect a, a smaller number of people.
Okay, great, and that's obviously a judgment call on that, that committee's part.
Correct.
Okay, the second question, is any town sending out applications without first identifying the rubric or metrics for eligibility?
No.
I don't feel like ours has a rubric or metrics for eligibility, so just wanted to point that out. Number three...
But it depends on what you're defining as, as eligibility. I mean, there, there are very, I mean, you have to have, uh, good standing, you have to be a business located within the, the town, um, you know, you have to be able to, you know, you know, demonstrate that there have been some negative impacts, um, which has been, I think, covered with reductions in revenue and, and those sort of things, so tho- those are eligibility criteria.
Sure, um, yeah, I guess my point is, we ask a lot of questions, but we don't say if anything precludes you from, you know, based on your answer, precludes you from getting the money. Um, so I'm just a little concerned that there's not very str... So I'm just a little concerned that there's not very strict, you know, paragraph stating, if you answer no to this, you're ineligible and then it keeps people out.
Well, and that's where, again, the, you know, especially by not setting a cap. You know, you're setting, I don't think there should be a presumption that just because somebody applied for seven million dollars, because that number's been thrown around a little bit tonight, I'll just use that as an example, just to lighten the mood a little bit. That they're going to get seven million dollars. So just because they apply for it doesn't mean that they're going to necessarily get that much. That is going to be a function of all the applications that come in, the relative merit of the applications that come in, and the scoring rubric, as you described, that is going to be applied to all of those.
Right, okay. Yeah, so somebody maybe, I guess, I'm not really sure. I guess somebody maybe will get five percent of what they ask for, somebody may get zero percent, somebody may get a hundred percent, depending on their request. And again, that's a judgment call by this deciding group. Which brings me to my third question. Is any town sending out applications without first identifying the group, the awarding group or the awarding agency? Like you said, Bristol has the community members. Has any town that you know of sent these out without first identifying who's deciding?
No.
I don't believe we've decided that yet. Number four, has any town given all of their money away without keeping aside any for-government projects? Or what is the typical ratio you see of nonprofits, business to government projects?
That is my ARPA triangle that you just described. And I hate to say that it depends on the locality, but it really does depend on the locality. I will say that, but because I don't want to be wishy-washy, I will give you some percentages. I would say, roughly speaking, I'd say forty to fifty percent is internally focused, meaning municipal projects, water, sewer, HVAC renovations to municipal office buildings and such. Then twenty to thirty percent for nonprofits and twenty to thirty percent for businesses. The length of the sides of those triangles will vary from locality to locality, but those are the three main buckets that they fall in. And that's not a bad, not a bad percentage based on what I'm seeing around the country.
Sure, sure. Okay, great. I'm going to skip number five for now.
Come on.
I mean, we'll skip six. What are, did any town that you know of or that you're working, I should say that you're working with or that you know of, decide or not decide how to split up the money into those percentages before sending out the applications?
Absolutely.
They did, okay.
Absolutely, yeah. They wanted to have a very clean slate. So they did, and they made the municipal projects submit applications just like the businesses and just like the nonprofits. So that you got a very clear and very complete picture of internal needs, business needs, and nonprofit needs.
Okay, that, I like, that's interesting. Who would submit the municipal projects department heads?
Department heads, department members, members of the administration, just an internal stakeholder.
Okay. What about members of the public? So for example, maybe somebody wanted the pool. Can a member of the public submit an idea for a municipal project or they would do that through a department head, maybe?
Generally, they would do that through a department head.
Okay, so if you were really for the pool, you maybe call.
Public Works, Parks and Rec, yeah.
Got it, understood. Okay. That's, yeah, that's interesting. I like that. Okay. Okay, well, these two are a little, we might put the law department on the spot a little bit with this too, but do you agree, Mr. Regan, that the administration has to go along with a legislative body to spend the money? Or is this a town council legislative function? And I don't know if you're aware with our charter, you know, knowledgeable with our charter, I wouldn't expect that you would be, but just in your professional opinion.
What I'm seeing certainly is the elected officials are setting the priority areas based on community input where the money is to be spent. And the administration is charged with carrying out those, that spending in those areas. You know, around the country, I'm seeing situations, again, I'll just use the analogy here, thirteen million. You know, the legislative body may say, we want, we're going to appropriate seven million dollars to municipal projects, four million dollars to nonprofits, two million dollars to businesses. And that's the thirteen million. That's the way it's appropriated. And then it's up to the administration to go through and execute the spending in those areas. I think the probably three to five program areas is the least number of program areas when they've taken that approach that I've seen. I have one client that has eight different appropriation areas. I have one that has fifteen. So, you know, it depends on the legislative body. I've also seen instances, again, I think I mentioned this earlier, where the legislative body will permit the administration to approve projects below a certain dollar amount. You know, say five hundred thousand dollars or something like that. Anything that's over five hundred thousand has to be brought to the elected officials for approval. So there are all sorts of ways that the elected officials can use their appropriation authority to set the spending policy, but that all has to be done with sort of community feedback, which is inherent in the American Rescue Plan Act considerations.
Okay, thank you. I think this was a big one, one of our prior meetings. Are you able to speak, well, I'm sure you are able to speak to the standard allowance. We need to decide that soon, and I think there's some confusion, you know, on some of our parts as to that.
Sure. So what the standard allowance is, is under the final rule, localities are permitted to use money for, quote, revenue loss. And all that means is you retain even more flexibility than what ARPA allows you to spend on. The only restrictions that you have, the money must, anything that you designate as revenue loss must be spent on governmental activities. The only things that you're not allowed to do with that revenue loss, tax relief, debt payments, claims and judgments, and pension and retiree healthcare costs. That's it. That's the list of no-go items. The rest that you normally spend on governmental activities, you're allowed to spend on. My experience has been that regardless of what the locality takes as revenue loss or not, it does not fundamentally change what they're spending the money on. It is a matter of classification of the reporting information that goes to the US Treasury. And as you stated, we have to make that declaration by the thirtieth of April. Based on the numbers that I've run from your prior audits, it is in the town, it's my recommendation that the town just go ahead and take the ten million dollar standard allowance that's permitted, make that declaration, and then you start spending the money as you determine, through the application process, through the civic engagement process, other things like that. It's really a classification matter.
Great. I think the only thing that we may be questioned, or there was some question as to government activity, would be if we're giving money to businesses. Because that's typically not something that would be in our budget or that maybe would fall under our government activity. But do you think that we have enough flexibility with that ten million to fit that?
Absolutely. I mean, just because you haven't done it before doesn't mean you're not allowed to. Or you're not eligible to, so.
All right, I think those are all my questions for now. I just wanted to make a couple of statements. The topic last night, the budget hearing that kept coming up was with various departments, was kind of people concerned about the deteriorating state of some of our town properties, the pool, the town hall, the gazebo, roads and parks. There was one man here who never, I've never seen him in a meeting ever before, and he came and sat here for about two and a half hours to speak during public works because he's upset about the condition of our roads and said in the past ten years, they've really gotten bad. And Rob Walter-Mittas from Public Works, he agreed. And he said, you know, he wants to do more, but obviously there's only so much we can affordably do. So when I heard we were getting the thirteen million dollars in the ARPA money, I was excited that we could use this to really spruce up the town, to fix some of these issues that make it look a little rundown. Because if we create a beautiful town, we take care of it, it helps everyone, helps businesses, it's inviting for residents and visitors. The best part is we could do this all and not have to raise taxes. So it seemed like really a win-win for, to use it on some of these projects to spruce up the town. So the only way to really help all Wallingford residents and businesses is low taxes. So that affects everyone. So if we can use this for some projects that help everyone, the town looks nicer and it's not costing anyone anything. You know, I look at Cheshire and how they spent a couple of million dollars of their, and, you know, I'm not necessarily saying the whole thing right now. I'm just saying some of the money. I look at Cheshire and how they spent a couple of million dollars of ARPA money for a park that's going to become their new town green. And in the summer, they're going to have concerts and families there. And they have their pool right next door, which people are swimming in. And hopefully for generations with some upkeep, they'll have a nice spot for the town to enjoy. And it didn't cost their taxpayers anything. But, you know, in Wallingford at this point, what are we getting for our ARPA money? We're buying the people a dump truck. So, and I'm not against that. I mean, it reduces taxes, that's fine. But I think we can, I think we can afford to do some nicer projects with this. And I know I've been, you know, pushing for this from day one. And I hope that the council, we can come up with a good compromise, similar to what the other communities are doing, where we split it up between municipal projects, nonprofits, businesses. And we really do something meaningful and nice for the entire community. But these applications, I do have concerns for those questions I began with. I just think we don't have a really specific, it doesn't seem to have a specific endpoint. I think there's, we don't know who's going to be judging them. There's no cap. I just, I think, I think if we go forward with these the way they are, we're going to end up in a mess down the road. And I don't think any of us wants that. So I just do have some concerns about these applications as presented. Thank you.
I make one, just a brief comment. I know roads were discussed there. Roads would very much need to come out of that revenue loss bucket. Infrastructure under ARPA is very narrowly defined as water, sewer, wastewater, broadband. That's it. That's the list. So, you know, doing road work is, would be a governmental activity. But it wouldn't be an allowable use under the ARPA bucket, but you would be able to use it out of your revenue loss bucket.
Understood. Thank you.
All set? Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Good, because I had the same question about the allowance of the ten million dollars. What could we spend it on? Could we soak it out to nonprofit and businesses? That makes that much more clear and easier. I want to repeat what I said earlier with the intent that we were moving the applications through the phases so that we could get to the point of releasing them while we decide what we're actually, how we're going to actually, who's going to review them and adjudicate them. I don't know if that was apparently clear. Reviewing the applications may be daunting, but I think it's something we have to do. And I think, you know, it's been said, we are here to do hard things. And I think that's what we are here for, for this. And, you know, it's, we could have a really, a really pretty house, but if it doesn't feel like a home on the inside, because people are suffering and businesses are suffering and nonprofits and whatever, then it doesn't matter how good everything looks. We want to make sure that the people are taken care of first. That's where I'm coming into all this, and that's why I'm willing to take on what would be this otherwise daunting consideration.
On the application adjudication.
Yeah.
You know, a framework that I found worked really, really well was in those three subcommittees, we'll call them, the government, the business and nonprofit. Those subcommittees got all of those applications. They took a cold pass through them the first time and basically did red, yellow, green, or green, yellow, red. I like being positive more than negative. So green, yellow, red. Green meaning, yeah, we want to approve these. Yellow meaning, you know what, we need more information. Red meaning, yeah, not feeling it. And they came back a second time, briefly revisited the greens and the reds to make sure that their initial gut feel was okay on that. And spent most of the time on the yellows, pushing them out into greens and reds. And went through that process then a third time for the tough calls. You know, where it's either the dollar amount of the ask is getting people some concern because it is a large proportion. Or if, you know, it was a really great application and a real need, but there weren't enough specifics to be able to say how the project would succeed. So that's a framework that you can use that we can help guide. And we attended all these subcommittee meetings and helped keep track of all the decisions and to help guide some of the discussions.
Have you found that if a business or a nonprofit, let's say, came in and said, you know, I want to do this for a million dollars, and the town was like, ugh, that seems like a lot, like, do you have an alternative? Was there kind of a, not a negotiation, but will you modify?
I think it's a negotiation. I think it's a give and take. You know, hey, you know, here's a, you know, it's a million dollar program to serve, you know, a hundred people over two years.
What could you do with half a million?
But if we did, you know, half a million to serve those folks over, you know, a year to start with, and then you come back and demonstrate, if you're going to do that give and take, it's very, very critical that you not appropriate all thirteen million in the first, you know, sixty days of this application period. There are going to be some wonderful ideas that come up in twenty-three and twenty-four that you're going to kick yourself for not having squirreled away a little bit for those. There are also going to be some projects, especially from the nonprofit community, that are going to demonstrate the power of this money at transforming people's lives and transforming the community. But it's through serving fifty people, and boy, wouldn't it be great to serve an extra hundred? And be able to have a little bit of that money squirreled away so that you can reward some of these successful organizations in demonstrating that they achieved the goals of the program, I think is important. You know, having a five to ten percent that just squirrel away for a next round of financing or something like that, I think is important. I guess by way of benchmarking, Bristol with their twenty-nine million set out to appropriate twenty-four million. So they had five million held back for this, quote, next round. And through this green, yellow, red process has gotten to about eighteen million of approved applications with two or three million more still in that yellow bucket that we're going back and forth with the organizations to get additional information. So, you know, there are ways of being able to structure this so that you can have a little bit held back to, you know, wait for some better, you know, some even better ideas to come out. Because we're not, all the great ideas aren't going to be monopolized in the first sixty days. And again, to reward those applicants that demonstrate the power of using that money that you're going to want to expand on those programs.
And thank you. And my last question was, you just answered it with, did municipalities set aside or agree to spend a certain amount now, kind of putting aside a pool for later? And we kind of talked about that.
And as you have some of these projects, as you have some of these projects, they, again, the period of availability is they have to be committed by the end of 2024, fully spent out by the end of 2026. What we're seeing is a lot of the projects that are non-municipal projects, so going to businesses, maybe they're doing some capital improvements or to nonprofits, programs. We're running those through June thirtieth of twenty-four or September thirtieth of twenty-four to make sure that if there are unspent funds on those projects, the government has enough time to look at those, reallocate some of those before the twelve thirty-one twenty-four deadline.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. That's it from you right now.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
I need just contingent verification on one thing that's been stuck in my head. When we, the idea of the accepting the standard allowance. When we, the idea of the accepting the standard allowance, can you clarify if we, if we accept that or we designate the $10 million instead of looking at some kind of revenue loss formula? Are we, are there limits on what we can spend that on? In other words, can it only be spent on municipal services? Because that's how I was, I understood it.
Government services, yes.
Government services.
Government services.
Okay. So...
And there's not an exhaustive list, the Treasury has very intentionally not put out a list of here, an exhaustive list of government services, they've left that to the judgment of the, the, the communities as to what constitutes that government service.
But we can, we can build a pool.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, so if it's, if it's something that normally would be funding?
And the category there would be 2.22, strong, healthy communities, neighborhood features that promote health and safety.
Okay. In other words, my understanding has been if it is something that is normally financed or through the municipal budget, it kind of would classify as a municipal service.
A government activity, yes, sir.
Okay. Having said that, we have 13 million to use, there's been a lot of, a lot of, a lot said from the administration and the Economic Development Commission on the, the need to provide relief to businesses in, in the community and nonprofits in the community before we consider any kind of municipal expenditures. So if we, by April 30th, accept to designate $10 million, does that mean we can only spend $3 million on the business and nonprofit applications?
No, it can come out of the $10 million as well, it doesn't restrict you on anything.
That's where I got, well, I thought that's what you just said, that's where I got confused. How can I send the check to a local business if I wouldn't normally do that out of my normal budget? Did I, was my question wrong?
Yeah, I mean, no, no, I understand your question and I guess my, my question to you is, because you've not normally done it, doesn't mean that you are legally prohibited from doing that program, you've just choose, chosen historically not to do that program. Okay? So you're, you're fully, you're fully allowed to do that through the appropriation process, correct? Is there anything that's, that's restricting you from doing that sort of program in charter and state law?
Potentially, yes. We, for example, we can only, we can only adopt tax relief programs that are allowed through state law. We can't decide to send rebates, well, we could potentially send rebates on certain tax bills, but we can't just decide to send money to local businesses for any number of reasons, as far as I understand, without there being some type of underlying law or ordinance allowing that. Am I correct?
I mean, I'll defer to...
Yeah, I, I think that's, that would be a concern is that if it's just an outright check, I mean, unless you're looking at it from, I mean, there are programs where you're authorized to do business, like, you know, the tax abatements and things like that.
Right.
And there's also, I think there's actually some business loan type programs that other communities do, I, you know, I'm not as familiar with those, but, and that was why I put the question directly to the, to the Treasury to just make sure we were on square footing because that is the purpose of ARPA. So to say that, because you choose that category, that you're excluded from doing the things that ARPA wants you to do, didn't seem to make sense, but I haven't gotten a response from that yet. So, you know, certainly if it's for purposes of doing something as part of an economic development, there's a general purpose for that, but you're right, there's not something that's so specific that says that.
Well, I think you can appreciate my, my concern right now, I've been on this mental block for the last month and...
So let's, let's take ARPA out of this, all right? You have a wealthy citizen that decides to donate $13 million to the city to deal with it as it sees fit. You're saying that you could not set up exactly the same program that you're considering spending ARPA on because it would violate state law, city charter, anything like that?
I don't know, putting it like that, probably not.
I don't think any, I mean, none of my other localities who are using funds for business relief have taken the position that I have to spend it out of ARPA because I'm not allowed to spend it out of revenue loss. Revenue loss is actually more flexible.
Okay.
The, the, the most restrictive spend is out of the, my words, the ARPA bucket.
I got you. Well, thank you, because I've been fairly consistent in urging my colleagues at our meetings to slow down and then suddenly it seemed like we were reaching a deadline where we had to make a very meaningful decision that could limit our options. And it sounds like you're telling me that by, now it sounds like we have to designate the revenue loss amount or the standard deduction amount, because that will specify how much we can spend in those areas, but it doesn't restrict what we can spend in the other side.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it, it gives you more flexibility. I mean, the, the law actually encourages you to use as much as you possibly can as revenue loss.
Mm-hmm.
Because it provides you with more flexibility on what to spend it on, there are less administratively burdensome requirements because some of the backend reporting is not required. So, you know, I certainly encourage all of my localities to take as much as they are legally allowed to do in the revenue loss bucket because it reduces the overall administrative burden.
That, that is very, that's a relief, thank you. I also, I had been concerned about, again, when I was worried about that, I said, well, how much, what about the nonprofits? And then it became clear to me that we, we already fund numerous community organizations, all sorts of things. I don't think there'd be any argument that we could issue money out of any bucket for that. And it leads me to something else, there, and I believe it, it may have been something that Counselor Laffin had said when we were talking about the nonprofits and potentially having them assist us, for lack of a better term, as a screening organization for individual applications. But they were, they were very clear with us that that could potentially cause conflicts for them, like any particular social service agency may, will apply to be a recipient and to also put them in a position to be screening and making decisions on individuals might cause some conflicts for them. And, and that led me to believe that we, perhaps we should be funneling any individual applications through our own town youth slash social services, whatever our, the social service departments we have in the community, not farming that out to the united way and those other groups who are going to have their own needs. Now, they may be dealing with the same people, but I think, and then when I figured that out, I thought, well, oh, that's cool, because that's municipal anyway. So there doesn't seem to be conflict. But that's something, again, we can talk about, because I don't think there's any pressure on us to make those decisions right now. Seems to me that as we go further, we need to make some serious decisions about what, if any, municipal projects we want to do and then how are we going to handle the business applications and then the applications from our nonprofit community organizations, those partners that we have out there and probably use our own youth service bureau and own, our, our, our own social service departments in the, in the town hall to handle the individuals who may not be able to get what they're looking for through the social service agencies. And if that sounds like so far I'm making sense, that's great, because I...
No, and it is, and the one thing that I would caution is that the more individual projects that, and, you know, an individual applying for, you know, $5,000 worth of relief for something or other, you know, you multiply that by X number of residents, the administrative burden for doing all that and tracking that is very large and most of my municipal clients, that's not part of their necessarily core competency, they've got, you know, those sort of programs are generally run by community organizations who are closer to the individuals who have that need. They also, a lot of them like the administrative fee that they can gather for running such programs as, as that. So, again, as I stated in my introductory remarks, this would be the only locality that I'm working with that would be setting up and, you know, an aid program directly to individuals that was adjudicated by the government itself and not by one of its community partners.
Oh. So you can certainly suggest a more streamlined manner, means of doing that?
I mean, I think if you put out there the request to a community partner or put out there, you know, that, hey, you're looking, almost put an RFP out for a project where, you know, a community partner runs this program for you, there, I, at all the other localities I participated with, there have been community partners willing to do that.
And they're not finding conflicts because they may want money too? They may want to be applicants as well?
Well, I'm not sure if, just because they do that program on behalf of the city doesn't mean they're allowed, you know, it doesn't preclude them from getting other programs that they would run, they're just, it's just a different program.
Lastly, oh, actually, one quick one. You talk about broadband. Are there, are there guidelines for that? In other words, is this, does it have to be townwide or could it be, for example, just a total, could we, could we wire this building and with broadband and Wi-Fi access and modernize the hell out of it with ARPA money?
Yes, what I'm seeing a lot of municipal governments do is to improve their IT infrastructure to allow for better online services to be provided, to do meetings like this, you know, have built out a, a more modern infrastructure to allow for businesses like this or for meetings like this to occur. Again, that helps mitigate the risk of the spread of COVID and other, other diseases like that. So, yeah, that, that's certainly modernizing that IT infrastructure is allowable under ARPA.
Mm-hmm. Great. Lastly...
You said that before.
What's that?
You, you said lastly before.
I say that several times, yeah. Third to lastly. I did say that before, sorry. No, then I stopped myself. Anyway, okay, finally, this is actually a big one for me. What are you seeing out there with business applications? Because I'm going to be frank, I was, I've been, my feelings on this have been fluctuating dramatically, the more I hear, the more I learn, the more I see. It seems to me that there has been so many programs already made available that have been taken advantage of by businesses.
Yep.
Okay? I have business people telling me, hey, we're still here, we weathered it, we're fine now. And I've said over and over again, I'm not interested in replenishing somebody's bank account. However, if they still have existing debt that they incurred, that they weren't able to pay off, or if there were, you know, who's going to get the money if they're looking for income replacement? Where's it going?
Yep.
But it seems to me that that's already been all done and people have received money, whether it's PPT or other money, they've had their loans forgiven. What legitimate needs are you still seeing that cause you to say this is, this is a, an, an application worthy of approval?
Capital improvements. So I am seeing, most of the business programs that I'm seeing designed are forward-looking. They are capital investments, they are investing, you know, in new equipment to allow for the more effective and efficiency delivery of, of the service. A lot of restaurants and other venues such as that are using it to improve outdoor dining, they're using it to improve their HVAC systems, but they're, they're forward-looking, buying information. The other very popular program is like a downtown facade improvement or a business facade improvement program where you've got some of the architectural and engineering designs that are similar so that you can have a sort of a community look and feel that allowing businesses to come in and, and improve facades. I've seen an interesting program as well in one of your sister localities that is running a, a, a program to promote advertising for some of the downtown businesses or the local businesses, I should call them, and nonprofits in the community newspaper. So they're getting a, a advertising allowance of $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 allowance specifically for the downtown businesses that's operated by the, the community newspaper, that's really innovative because you're promoting, you know, the downtown businesses who might not be able to afford right now some of that advertising and you're also providing support to a community newspaper that definitely needs it. That's just, you know, a couple of different unique programs that I've seen around businesses.
But it appears that you're seeing forward-looking investments?
It is definitely forward-looking, it is not...
As opposed to rearview mirrors?
Yeah, it is not rearview mirror in that question on...
Because that's a big one.
Have you gotten paycheck protection or have you gotten economic injury disaster loans, grants or, or loans, you know, yes, how much? And if the answer to that is no, then the, the question, the follow-up usually with that is why not?
Right.
Why didn't you go for those? Those, those were programs that were available to you that you chose not to take advantage of. Most of the business programs that I'm seeing are very forward-looking, investing in the future and not looking back at the past.
You're not seeing a lot of income loss replacement requests?
Very few.
Being granted?
Very...
Not even seeing them being asked for?
Not even, that's not the way the programs are even designed. The programs are designed being forward-looking.
That's very helpful, the no. I, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has really had that read on this yet and I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because I'm trying to decide what would be a legitimate business application and what can we, what should, what should we, should we be looking for? Okay. I've held up enough of your time, thank you. That was really lastly. For, for now, thank you very much.
Lastly for now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, colleagues.
Counselor Fishbait.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's why when you, when you look at those forward projects, is it more fair to fund a project that benefits the entire town or, you know, put in HVAC in a private business? So, anyway, you know, I just want to come back to an issue we were dealing with before, having to do with the power. And, you know, I archive all this stuff and we had the same issue with the Dog Pound Trust. Who had the power to appropriate money from the Dog Pound Trust? And in 2014, I asked for a memo as to that and, you know, basically that was an appropriation to the town. And the first paragraph references the portion of the charter that I had read before and it goes on to say that the council has the power to provide for the administration of the gift. In the opinion of this office, this being the law office, the town council in fact has exercised such power in creating the fund and authorizing the mayor to administer the fund. And then it goes on at the end and it talks about 2009. The mayor had proposed a budget and in there were expenditures in the, in the animal control budget and the council decided to appropriate money from the fund over the mayor's objection for those appropriations. So I can't put the two puzzle pieces together here. So I'm just, I'm wrestling with that. That happened in 2009 and we're here differently today, but one of the things that I've been, you know, focused on here is the accountability. But one of the things that I've been, you know, focused on here is the accountability in the application. So, Mr. Regan, in, in your experience, well, I think you've indicated that most towns don't have this revenue loss component, correct?
Do.
They, they do?
Do.
Okay. As far as businesses and, and applications?
Again, I think that those are two separate.
Yeah, okay.
Two separate items.
And I, and I misspoke. So we're talking about a, a business having to prove a need through loss during the pandemic in order to be eligible for these funds? That's not what you're seeing?
That's not what I'm seeing.
Okay. Because the application, it doesn't, because there is no criteria that's been, you know, the guardrails, but I know the application that's before us asks about those kinds of things. So if, if you're not, have you seen any town that's done it that way?
Not with their ARPA funds.
Okay. And what about accountability as far as these forward projects? So when a business says that they're going to put in the HVAC system and they estimate, they got a bid and, you know, it's going to be $30,000, what follow-up are you seeing in towns to make sure that the number was good, they actually spent the money on that, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yep. So we're actually working with the locality to write the requirements into the contract that they have with the organization that's getting the money to say, you know, again, for your example on HVAC, $30,000, that they will provide those invoices to the, to the locality to demonstrate that they've spent the money on, on that HVAC system. And if necessary, you know, that's, we do the, the post-award monitoring as well. I mean, we've certainly, or it's written in the contract that we're allowed to go out and inspect to see where the money was spent. So we could go out to the, to the business and see that, yeah, this looks like a new HVAC system.
And the way the contracts are structured, if for whatever reason, the project comes in less than what they had bid, you know, because a lot of times, you know, especially in construction projects, they don't know what's behind the wall, right?
Right.
So they overestimate, you know, this is the worst case scenario, this is the most it's going to be, but the project comes in less. How would the contracts deal with that overpayment, so to speak?
Well, then it's on a reimbursement, most of these contracts are on a reimbursement basis. So they would have to present the invoices for payment and then you would, you would pay them the, the money. So, you know, we would be monitoring the project while it's going on to see, okay, it's only came in at $25,000. The project gets closed out. At the end, $5,000 of appropriation authority gets returned to be repurposed.
Okay.
So you, you approved the project for $30,000. It came in at 25. You're not going to write them a check for another $5,000 because the project's over. So now you have $5,000 to repurpose to another project.
That makes sense. The application that's before us tonight, I, I think requires the entity to be a 501(c)(3).
For nonprofits.
Okay. So how would, let's say the Board of Education wants to replace the track at, at one of our high schools. How would they utilize the documents that are before us to apply?
They're not a 501(c)(3).
I understand. That was exactly my, yeah. So is there an application that's set up so that the departments, because I heard that's how that would happen, that's, the departments would be able to apply for money?
Nothing's been written that way here. That was an example he gave of another town did it that way.
Sure.
That, that's not what the subcommittee discussed.
Right, I understand. But the subcommittee, which is not made up of the same portionment as this body is, can discuss whatever it wants to, but we're here now. So.
That's certainly something that can be designed very quickly.
Okay. And?
And it just, for that, by way of that example, with schools, they've got ESER money and other, other pockets of, of money. So we'd hope that they would exhaust any of those before they come for any American Rescue Plan Act money. I'm not seeing, the only time I've seen educational, you know, K through 12 come to get any ARPA money was for some premium pay for school bus drivers because it's so hard to get bus drivers right now. Other sort of educational needs like that, there are so many buckets of money, much the way it was discussed, you know, different buckets of money for businesses, there are lots of buckets of money for K through 12 that don't need to come after any ARPA money for that.
Okay. I, I think, and maybe I read the article incorrectly, that Meriden used ARPA funds to create outdoor classrooms, you know, in case we have a situation where.
I'd have to go back and look at that one. That one's not ringing a bell on me, they're one of mine.
Okay. I, I know they, they created the outdoor classrooms. I thought it was ARPA, but it could have been, it was at the advent of all this, so I could have just been assumed it was ARPA. So the Board of Education would not be precluded from applying? You're just saying that we should be careful making sure that they have expended whatever funds would be available to them first?
It would be a very rare instance where you would want them to, in my opinion, what I'm seeing at other localities, it's very rare instance where they're coming to the, the primary government for additional funding coming out of ARPA because there are so many different buckets that they've got.
Okay. I think that's all that I have at this point. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Allenson.
I just wanted to, I guess, propose, or ask my fellow counselors how we would create a rubric or an acceptance criteria if we don't have an application yet. And the whole point of this is to take suggestions on the application itself. And if we don't like it, then make some suggestions on what we can do to move it forward. And then let's create an acceptance criteria because as we know, we have no power as the ARPA committee. So we have hashed out some of these ideas, but certainly we don't, all we can do is put forth some questions to ask. But if we don't ask the questions, how do we know if we're going to accept a yes or no answer? So I, I just, you know, it seems like every time we get somewhere, we put the cart in front of the horse again and say, oh, well, we haven't, we've, we've, we've done a lot of work on these applications, but we haven't determined how we're going to fund things. And now we've done a lot of work on these applications, but we don't know the acceptance criteria. But the reality is, all we're doing is standing still and we're not, we're, we're talking through all of these things and these are all valuable questions and answers, certainly not diminishing the session. But I just want to know how exactly we would develop an acceptance criteria if we haven't developed an application. Because an application comes first and then you say, okay, based on these questions that we've asked, how are we going to determine pass or fail? Or how are we going to determine a red, yellow, green on, you know, and, and, and get this going through? So I'm to, I'm, I'm, I don't think that this session is, is a waste at all. I just, you know, kind, take a little bit of issue with the, the banter about creating an acceptance criteria when we haven't really agreed on an application because we had all of these questions. And that's okay. And we can create another application for public, for the public departments if that's what we need to do. But we needed to have this session first in order to develop that criteria. So that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about the application. And so I guess the, my concern is, you know, if you put out an application, if I was a business and I sold a product and I put my product out on, in the marketplace with, for, at a certain price and nobody buys it, then I know that that product is not, you know, the consumer doesn't want that product at that price. What we're talking about is giving out government money, right? So if you start with the application and then you say, who wants money? And then people say, well, I meet or I don't meet the application. That doesn't really assess the need, it just assesses who's interested in, in government money. So I, I think, to Ms. Allenson's point, I think what we need is to sort of set a priority as far as what, you know, what buckets we think that the money should, should go in. And we sort of talked about three buckets, right? The municipal bucket for municipal projects, nonprofits and, and business. I really like the idea of sort of looking at forward-looking projects as opposed to trying to replace someone's income loss because I think with, based on all the other, other government programs and so on, it's going to be really dicey for the town to try to parse out, you know, what people lost for income, who's giving us the correct numbers, you know, what money they got from somewhere else and so on and so forth. So with that, I guess I would like to make a motion to propose that we spend 50% of the total ARPA money on municipal projects, 25 on not-for-profits and 25% on business.
Second.
That was 50 municipal, 25 not-for-profit and 25 business?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yeah, once again, we're making a determination of what money is available before we've even put out an application. I, I, I don't understand what the reluctance is to find out how many people are in need, how many businesses, whatever. I know of businesses, they tried to apply and couldn't get through the various processes. Either that or they were successful once and weren't successful other times. So we're prejudging that, oh, well, too tough, you didn't make it, well, that's tough. I think we ought to know and I think we ought to assess what the situation is. But we're predetermining what we think the results will be. The purpose of the application is to assess what the need is.
Rebel, Mr. Chairman?
You can respond.
I'm not certain how the application though determines the need of the community, right? So you put out an application, people either apply or don't apply. But I guess if I was a business and I wasn't certain that there was any money coming to me at all, how would I know that it was worth applying for in the first place? So I'm not sure how the application gets to what the need of the community is. To me, the, the need of the community is based on a, a decision of the, of the community. So maybe it's not the council, maybe it's another group, and I'd be okay with that as well. But I don't know that you can put out an application and then depending on who responds is how you determine, you know, what the need is. It's kind of like putting out a Facebook survey, right? It's like the people that choose to respond, choose to respond, but you, you haven't really reached the, the end.
I mean, you just mentioned that community survey, you know, I mean, you use Facebook as the example. There are numerous examples of localities that have put out such a community survey, posted on the website, had it up for 30, 60 days, that is basically, you know, I'll just give an example, you come up with 10 different programmatic areas, you know, support to businesses, support to nonprofits, you know, different public works, public safety, public health, and give them a hypothetical $100,000. Say, split this up how you would like to see this money spent. And you put that up, you get that community input and that is what is used to set some of the, the elected official priority, you know, that 50, 25, 25 that, that you just discussed. You don't need to have a large window to keep that open, but that is a, certainly a way that numerous localities have gauged that. And then the applications follow behind that because then you've gauged where the community priority is, you've appropriated money into those areas based on the results of the survey and your own personal survey of your, your constituents and what you're hearing from. And then the applications fall into those buckets and you start the, the evaluation process. That's certainly something and, you know, that is something that's included in the cost of what we're doing. You know, that is, you know, we have that capability in much the same way where we would launch the portal, we can launch a community survey.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Once again, I don't understand how the state did it. The state and the federal government said, we're making a program available and those who need it, apply. They, they didn't, they didn't put a survey out. They, they said, we know there's a problem and we want to know about it and if you have a need, you apply. So suddenly we're stumbling over this locally, we were presented with, well, we have funds that we can use in the same way. And we don't want to really find out from the people who need. Was the state process flawed? I mean, I think it was in many ways, but they went out and, and requested, make application through various means and processes, local banks, et cetera, make application. What we're saying is, make an application. Why, why, why can't we do the same thing the state did?
Fair enough question, Mr. Chairman. So if we were to set the 50, 25, 25 buckets and later on we determined that the need was far beyond the money that we had set aside, we could adjust, we could adjust those later, could we not?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Previously reported, and during the one, on the subcommittee reports, we reported that the committee, and again, it's up to the council to decide and that's what we're talking about now, counselors, Tessa and Allison had worked out a ballpark recommendation of 40% for business, 30% for the nonprofit with a 30% hold, which goes back to what was discussed earlier. And you know what? And I'm okay with the 25, 25. The 50, I don't think we should lock down half the money on government projects out of the gate. If we don't allocate the 50 to the government projects or community projects, then it, it's in the government bucket at this point anyway, waiting to be allocated down the line. I would much rather see what the businesses, nonprofit need comes back with and then we can determine if we need to go above and beyond the 25% and, and how, or, and or how far do we pull into that remaining bucket?
Is that inquisitive look that request for a comment? Counselor Carmody?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If, if Counselor Laffin could just clarify the numbers you just mentioned.
Sure. It was 40% for business, 30% for nonprofit, which would include allocations to the community or, or individuals. And then 30% hold.
I do like that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman. I, I do want to see what the need of the community is and I think the application process will show us that. But I don't want to spend all the money yet because I do think we should be looking at municipal projects at some point in this process.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the public?
Good evening. Joe Mira from Economic Development. Just want to put things into perspective if I could. This is government funds, okay? Again, it's not free money, it's government funds. The government, two years ago, turned around to the business community and said, close, you're out of business, okay? Leaving the business community there, paying rent, paying insurance, paying for supplies, all the expenses that goes with running a business, but not being able to have any income, okay? Then the government, in their wisdom, said, okay, you can open up, but the community cannot be crowding your store, you can have limited people in there. So they're, they're still paying full rent, paying full insurance, paying full expenses with maybe 20% income. Government woke up one day and said, whoa, we made a mistake. Let's put together some funds and get it back to these people. We put them in a situation that they didn't belong in. Now we have the money and we're talking about pools and parks and to benefit the majority of the community. In my opinion, that's very sad. There's people out there that need it because they didn't get it through other sources. As I said previously, some of these people are working too hard to apply for these sources. Some of them, for whatever reason, couldn't get to it. Some of them didn't understand it. For whatever reason, they're running a business out of no fault that they've owned, the government came in, said, close. And the government found their mistake and says, here's some money. Now I believe the community should benefit from that money, but we first should send out the application. We should stop talking in circles and get some facts and figures. You want a bid on the pool? Well, I'd like a bid on the, the business community to find out what they really need. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Welch, did I see you move?
Thank you, Chairman. Ken Welch, 21 Pleasant Street. Uh, I'm here as part of the coalition, and I can tell you right up front that, uh, over the 10 years that I've been involved, we really consider ourselves an extension of the council and an integral part of the community. I've spent the last couple of weeks talking to various organizations. I wonder how many of you have spoken to the police chief in the last week? Somebody raise their hands? So that's critical, in my viewpoint. I spent this morning with him for two hours, and the deputy chief, and I came away from there about as depressed as I've been. That's why I'm mentioning it. You know, I've said this before, it's really nice to walk by a municipal building and pat yourself on the back and say, you know, I helped fund that. But if the cemetery was on the other side of the street of that municipal building, you'd also have to take credit for the gravestones. And if you had a conversation with the police chief, you'd be well aware of how often those gravestones go up. That's not fair. Now, I'm not asking for the money today, but I, and I do appreciate the fact that, that we chew this thing like a cow's cud and try to find the right way to spend the money, but you can't allocate it the way you're talking. Just arbitrarily take most of those funds. Bristol gets 50 cents on the dollar for, for people. We get 30 cents. Why do we get 30 cents? Because we're a good community, well-run, and we're in really good shape. So the, the feds have decided we get less money per capita because we're in such good shape. But I can tell you, if you were in that room for two hours with me today, you'd have a totally different opinion. I like the idea of getting the applications, I like the idea of going to the next step and finding out what it really is. You should too. And I hope that's where we end up. So thanks for all your hard work up to this point, and, uh, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Tim Ryan, Economic Development Commission. We have taken the stance right along that applications should be sent into the marketplace to determine need, and I've heard a lot of great conversation, and I appreciate all the effort, energy we're all putting into this, but I haven't heard anything that's just, you know, dissuaded me from saying that that's still not a good approach. Mr. Regan shared tonight, you know, if, if we want to allocate by buck, some buckets, the 40, 30, 30, no harm because we can change it. So we, so let's, let's put the applications in the market that determine the need. I want to say that we also supported changing the FTE number from 25 to 60, as Chairman Laffin had mentioned. I want to talk about community survey, so that's come up a number of times. Let's ask the town how they want to use the money. I think Joe Mira just moments ago shared, and I agree, that that's not the intent of the money. First off, a survey of a community where there's 40,000 people and 2,500 businesses is statistically skewed in such a heavy weight in terms of public opinion, all right? That's not what the money is allocated for. The money was put forth by the government as some sort of reciprocity for the fact that these businesses were shut down. So let's figure out what the need is. Now, as, as far as the, the comments about, you know, future projects, use the money for projects, we are looking, and the entire application is structured this way, we're looking backward to determine the need, and we're going to look forward to determine the use, which I'm okay with. Let's take 4 Center Street, perfect example. So the gentleman that owns 4 Center Street, which is the old Rubens Men's Building on the corner, he was, he addressed the, the subcommittee, all right? He has suffered greatly in terms of the loss of rents. So he comes forward, let's say, I think the application has to be structured in such a way that he can come forward and say, this is what I lost during, because of the, because of COVID. But for us to sit down and say, okay, then put what, how you're going to use it in project form, because we want to see something positive happen with the building, I'm, I'm completely okay with that, and I think the Economic Development Commission is completely okay with that. So the fact that it could be project-based is fine by us. And let's see. All right, I think, uh, one thing that has not been mentioned tonight that's come up any number of times at the subcommittee level was the utilization of, and review of tax returns. So Jack, when you get a second, if you could just talk about that, because that was, talked about it, that, at length, in determining how do we, how do we establish and determine someone's real need, we want to make sure that, as stewards of the money, that we're, you know, no one's taking advantage of us, no one's double-dipping, triple-dipping, we want to make sure that it's going to people who really need help. So if you could speak to that when you get a second, Jack, I'd appreciate it. And also, an application period was mentioned, at 30 or 60 days, I would strongly recommend that we get to the point where we put an application in the market, it'd be 90 days. I mean, let's leave it out there to make sure that everybody knows about it and that we give people a full opportunity to apply for the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Regan, do you care to respond to his inquiry about using tax returns as a part of the?
Sure, that's certainly something that is permitted. You can set up any, any program you want to, to do that. It does increase the administrative burden on the applicant to provide all of that additional information, provides, you know, additional requirements for the adjudication. You're going to have to come up with a value judgment of whose loss is more critical to theirs than others. That goes to Councilman Allison's, um, point on the scoring rubric, you know, and ARPA itself encourages self-certification as a way of reducing the administrative burden on the applicants. So, you know, i- if the city is, or the town is going to be obtaining that information, it's going to have to have a way of safeguarding all of that information so that you're not disclosing personally identifiable information or any, any sort of information like that. There, so there's, you know, there are numerous considerations should you accept taxpayer information like that. If I may, one other thing, I think there was a discussion or a comment made about community surveys, and, you know, that's not what the intention of the act was. I respectfully disagree. I think that that community engagement is foundational to where the money is being spent. There are ways to do those surveys to be able to get that information, certainly getting the applications is another way of being able to gauge community sentiment, but to dismiss, you know, community surveys as a key way of gauging, uh, community intention, I, I think is, is not consistent with the American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you. I don't see any hands in the gallery at the moment. Does Miranda come up? Attorney Small, if you want to talk while Ms. Miranda's walking up?
I just, I-
It's fine.
I just throw this out there, when you're talking about dividing it 50, 25, 25%, but maybe it changes, so you're saying it's a cap, but it's not, maybe it's not a cap on different categories, and so I'm not really sure what the purpose of that is, if it's something that could be changed. I don't know how that helps you by doing that at this point in time, it's just, just my point.
Thank you. Ms. Miranda, if you could tell us who you are for the record, please?
So Mandy Miranda, the Director of Youth and Social Services. For me, and I know with the way it's defined in ARPA, you've got your categories, right? But the way I'm looking at it, you've, so small business is, is the people of the town. You have small business, you have individuals and households, it's all one in the same, and then you have nonprofits who are helping, you know, the people of the town. And having those programs, and you need them in order to continue having the residents being able to come back and utilize the services of the town and all of that. The applications, we need, my take is, we need, I don't know what the need is, to be perfectly honest, I have no idea. But to have the applications will then determine the next step. So it was mentioned, you know, like the administrative piece of things, right? When it comes time for the, for that next step, maybe that's something that Youth and Social Services can do, absolutely, depending on what the need is, but if there's this huge overflow of, you know, you, we've got a lot of applications coming in from nonprofit and individuals and households, you know, we might have to look at things and how, and how we're doing things within my office. So it's, I need, I don't know what the need is, and I don't know, um, moving forward, that's something that we're going to have to look at, for sure. Our seat at the table, 100%, you know, and we're a part of that process, but there's a lot of the administrative, I mean, I was, you know, just thinking back, like, thinking about how, when those applications are coming in, who's receiving those applications, right? Having to sit down and, and if there's a, we've, I would imagine there's going to be a committee of all, who's contacting the committee to get them together, right, to schedule those? Having the, the people who are applying coming in, you know, and then at the end, the end game, so now we've determined the cost, right, or the, um, the amount that people are going to get, how is that, what's that process going to look like? You know, because checks could be kind of large, right? You know, depending on, on what people are applying for and what's being granted by the committee. So how is that going to look? And getting that information, or getting that money to the people. So for me, the application is huge, just to be able to determine the need. So, thank you.
Tim Ryan, Economic Development Commission. I just want to clarify something on the, um, the tax returns. I was not advocating for or against, I just heard it come up so many times at the subcommittee meeting, and it hadn't been mentioned tonight, so I just wanted to make sure it was brought into the dialogue. But I do want to address, um, my opinion. From the very start of ARPA, the very start, the conversation was all about business relief. It's amazing to me how this has morphed into so much more over time. And now, I think Mr. Regan mentioned earlier, 50% or better is being used for community projects. The entire conversation was about business relief when this came out, and I want to just, one of the original ARPA documents had an A, B, C, D format in terms of use, and under A was small business relief, aid to, aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality, and nonprofits and households, all right? The D, all right, in an A, B, C, D format, was about community projects. So as time has gone on, the conversation has completely morphed into more driven by community projects. I'm just asking you again to consider the spirit of what this money was allocated for, all right? It has, it has morphed into something very different, but its intent, and I know it's arguable, and I'm not trying to argue with Mr. Regan, but my interpretation of this document and its intent was that it was set forth to help businesses, nonprofits, and individuals who are negatively impacted by COVID. Community projects was D out of an A, B, C, D format. Thanks.
Maria Harlow, Six Holly Lane. I know that I'm going to sound like a broken record, but again, the purpose of this fund is to help those in our community who are struggling. We may be surrounded by them, or we may not, but I can tell you, from all of us that work in the nonprofit world, there is a lot of people in our community who are struggling. About 20, 28% of the people in our community, working people, doing all the right things to be able to support themselves, struggle to make ends meet. I believe that is about 600 people in the, from, eight children, in the Wallenford Public Schools are in free and reduced meals. People, every single day have to make decisions. Do I pay my rent? Do I buy food? Do I pay my mortgage? Do I pay my utilities? This is on the everyday basis. I am from Wallenford, I adore this town, I want to see it thriving and beautiful, but I feel that there are priorities that have to be taken care of first. Our families, our children, we have to take care of them first because that's the purpose of this money. We cannot look away. This is the opportunity that we have to help those who are struggling because of the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, to the mayor and to Mr. Ryan's, um, about their interpretation of the ARPA money. If that's their interpretation, that's fine, but as I said before, if the government felt that way, and they might have, the money that's in the pipeline right now for businesses is in the tens of billions of dollars and continuing to come. So the question to the chair, to the consultant, Mr. Regan, there is new, there's still the economic, um, what is that, the one called? You know, so many of them. The one where the businesses, if they had 50% of their income, economic retention credits, they're still available out there. You have to just have 50% of your income at one point and 70% of your income, and you can qualify for $10,000 tax credits. There is another round coming, Mr. Regan, correct me if I'm wrong, that the feds are, I think it's 55 billion to start with, for small businesses, restaurants, all those type of venues, and then there's going to be some other money coming for some other venues and so forth. My interpretation and understanding the ARPA was, the ARPA said not to give money to anything that had another avenue to get money. If there was, the ARPA money should be the fallback if there was nothing available. Is that the way you interpret it, Mr. Regan, or no?
No.
What, how do you interpret that, then, on the, I'm talking about business money here, not, not not-for-profits?
There's nothing in the literature, there's nothing in the regulations that says if you participated in paycheck protection loan program, or economic injury disaster loan program, or took advantage of any of those others, that you're specifically precluded from getting aid under ARPA.
Never said that. What I was saying was that these programs are available out there, and what ARPA said was you should go to those programs first before you come to ARPA.
I don't see that anywhere in the regulations.
It might not be in the regula, but that's what they're, what they wrote in the, in the thing from the Treasury, Treasury Department wrote that. Before I forget, Attorney Fishmine, that, they, the money was used for merit and from COVID-19 relief money that the public schools had, the municipal schools had received. It wasn't through ARPA money. You can check that. The... If a business receives money and is in the pipeline to receive money from any of these other programs, how do you, because this is 90 days out, the new round of financing might not be for till the summer, how do you catch those two if they get double-dipped? If they're looking for $10,000 and they get $10,000 from the feds, and then we give them $10,000 after they've already passed in their application, no fault unto their own, they put in the application, they don't know where they're going to get the money from, is there a clawback, or is it just, that's the way it is?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
I think so.
It depends on whether you want to set up the program to have a clawback like that, because there's, there's a lot of money still out there that's going to be coming down the line. And you mentioned, you mentioned it about fees. Do you have any idea what range of fees you're talking about to administer this? You brought, you said that, it was half jokingly, you said, but there's fees involved, how this is administered? Yeah, by nonprofit organizations, what I usually see is some sort of fee that is set by the nonprofit organization on a per applicant basis. I would not be able to hazard a guess because of the size or the complexity of the program, but there's usually some sort of, of administrative fee. All nonprofits organizations are eligible to get, um, under grant programs, an indirect cost rate, the de minimis rate's 10%. rate, the de minimis rate's 10%, except by the uniform grant guidance, but they can get above 10% if they get an indirect cost plan prepared, you know? So there are all sorts of different ways that nonprofit organizations are able to recover their costs on that. My point there was that there are, the nonprofit organizations are generally closer to the members in the community that need those services rendered and are in a better position because it's core competency of theirs to, you know, assess those needs, get them into those programs, and, you know, that's what I'm seeing in other localities.
But then we'll use coalition for better Wallenford because they're here, so somebody of there, if they send an application saying they want a dollar, whatever, say they want $100,000, that's an easier number, and it's 10%, wouldn't it be, it would be wiser then for the council to do, go directly to them so they can use all $100,000 of their money versus potentially losing $10,000 of it through somebody administering the cost? Is it wiser for the council to do it that way or for applicants that they know? Well, that's what I'm asking.
I'm just going to ask you to hold back. You can, you can, when we come back to the council, you can...
I'm asking, is that how it's going to be set up or are you going to go through, so they can come directly to you? Okay, but it wasn't clear on your applications how that's going to be, because they should come directly to you, and most applicants should come directly to you for that reason. There's more. I know this is going to go through the application. Do churches, mosques, synagogues, temples have the ability to come for this money also? Have you seen that in other communities?
Through certain types of programs, I've seen those organizations providing social service programs. I'm seeing those types of organizations, if they have community housing programs, get additional funding for, you know, running those, those community housing programs. Those are what I'm seeing, those religiously affiliated organizations, that's how they're participating in this program.
But not for lost revenue or something of that nature? You're not seeing anything like that?
I haven't seen any programs set up where nonprofit, that are looking back at nonprofits that have lost money or businesses that have lost money. There are, you know, the localities that I've been working with have taken the position that there have been other programs that have been funded for that, that those organizations have the opportunity to participate in, and that this is a more forward-looking program, trying to invest resources in the, in the future on a go-forward basis.
So based on what Mr. Regan just said, so essentially in other communities, you're saying that businesses aren't looking for, well, they could be looking for, but they're not, other communities aren't going to fund lost revenue, they're going forward to fund forward programs to make the business better or more adaptable or whatever reason they want to do it, but it's not to recover lost revenues or anything of that nature? That's not what you're seeing?
I think I told you what I'm seeing.
For the council, so I'm just, not moving against, I'm just trying to say, the town should also participate in this, as some people have said. Thank you.
All right, I bring it back to the council. Counselor Testa.
Thank you. What I think I'd like to see us doing is, first of all, yes, let's approve these applications and get them out there so we can start seeing what the needs are. While that's going on, our subcommittee can continue to work, and I'd like, while that's going on, I'd like us to start talking about any and all potential community projects we might want to consider. I said this at the very beginning of this, let's start itemizing things that we could potentially consider worthwhile, so that as we move down the road, we have, we now have, we will reach that point where we will have a good understanding of what the needs are from the local businesses, we'll have a good understanding of what the needs are from our nonprofit and social service agencies, and to a certain extent even potentially some individual applicants. And we'll, we should by then also have a good idea of what we as counselors have in mind as priorities for potential capital investments. That may be three months from now, maybe two months from now, but I think that's where we need to go. I think it's where we've been headed. I was one of the people who suggested setting up these buckets when I was under the misunderstanding that we had to do some type of delineation, if you will. Now that I know that the pressure's not quite on, I don't see the point in that, but whatever. I think we've come a long way, and we're getting a better understanding of where we are. So let's get the applications out, let's start finding out what the needs are, and let's start talking among ourselves about what we might like to see done, because I have a list of things of my own that I'd like to share, so I'm sure everybody has ideas. That's where I'd like to see us going, so that's where we'll leave it, for me, anyway.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. I agree with everything Counselor Testa said. The, I'm leery, I don't think we need to definitely make the determination on the bucket thing, like we talked about. If we're going to do it, I think I would be leery of including the 50% of the government right out of the gate. I don't think it's a message I'm comfortable with to the nonprofits and the businesses. Again, any allocated or unbucketed funds is in the government pool anyway. So if I was to support that, I would, I would need the 50% government part out. I don't know that we need that now. The priority for me, as Counselor Testa said, I agree, is to, that the council, we get some sort of verification or validation from the full council on moving the applications forward. That will give the consultant the two weeks or so he said he would need to process and get them ready, not to put them out online until maybe comes back to our next meeting, where it gives the subcommittee time to get together and tie up any of the loose ends, whether that be formulating the group that will adjudicate and whatever, if people are comfortable or feel the need to have that determined in advance. I know there is a motion on the table, so that, that has to be handled, and I know there are other speakers on the list, but that's where I stand right now. Thank you.
Counselor Fishmine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a question. If we write a check to a business, is it taxable income to the business?
Believe that is.
You know, I disagree with the position that...
And you'll be cutting 1099s for all of those as well, which is another administrative burden on the...
Agreed, yeah. I wholly disagree that it was the intent of this program to provide, to repair harm, especially to businesses. If that was the intent, would have been written that way. Wasn't.
It's called the rescue plan.
No, I understand.
They use the word rescue, so, just saying. Sorry, I apologize.
But rescue can be utilized in various different ways. You can rescue one from future harm by sending them to detox. You've rescued them. So it's certainly not retroactive. Retroactivity, I think, is contemplated, but for one to say that that is the sole purpose of these funds, I just, I don't agree, and certainly just the title would not sway. There's a lot of documents out there about this program. I have to disagree with the process that we're at, because, you know, I was the one who suggested the subcommittee, and the problem arose because we had a presentation up on the board, and it was quite clear that there were discussions that happened that we weren't part of that ended up in that presentation happening. I remember specifically, one of the things that was up there was, you know, business had to be, had to have at least 25 full-time employees. So my question was, where did that come from? Well, that's sort of what we were told. So it led to the question of utilizing the consultant to ascertain what can we do? A bunch of checkboxes. And I think we're still there, because we still, we have to formulate the guidelines before you can formulate the application, because you may formulate a guideline after the application has already been produced or approved, it's not addressed in the application. So, and the argument that you have to throw these applications out here to test the need, we know there's going to be an excess of $13 million in requests. So if you haven't ascertained the guidelines, you know, I'd like a PlayStation 5. I spent a lot of time, you know, doing stuff during the pandemic, and, you know, that's my need. You know, we don't want requests like that. We want requests that are possibly within the guidelines that we, we create. So it begs the question, you know, if we have $15 million or $18 million of requests, you know, okay, we've ascertained the need, the need is an excess of $13 million, what do you do with that information? Do you have to call out the applications or, or do you say, as the motion says, this is the amount of money we've done, we have? And I've done this with other grant groups, right? You know, you've got a bunch of money and you've got a bunch of applications that you've generally said are okay, and then you start to trim it down from there. But where we are doesn't make sense. You know, the fact of the matter is, right now, the motion that's on the table contemplates possibly appropriating $3.25 million to businesses, and the same amount to nonprofits. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, but what I'm hearing tonight is it's not enough, and that's a little disappointing, you know? It's disappointing. So, you know, I just, that is a lot of money. I think it's a place to start so that we can formulate where we're going to go, so that at least we can utilize some of this money. And I totally agree, you know, it should be forward, forward-looking. That's where I'm headed here. I think going back and trying to figure out, even if you had tax returns, you cannot categorically determine that there is some sort of revenue loss to a business based upon tax returns. You know, businesses make capital improvements themselves, or they don't, or, you know, those things impact their businesses as well. So what do you do with the business that chose to improve? You know, they took the downtrend, you know, they were closed, but they took the opportunity to renovate their business and to utilize money that they had in the account, and now their business has improved as a result of that. They took lemons and made lemonade, essentially. But they wouldn't be subject to this because arguably they didn't have a cognizable loss of income. So I don't know. I, I'm just looking for a bunch of checkboxes at this point, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tatta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little sticky to talk about this, but I did make it a point to talk to a bunch of department heads in town and ask them what their needs were and if they were able to use ARPA funds and what, and they're in a tough position because they, the, the use of the funds was very clear from the beginning that it was going to be used for businesses. And so that puts them in a hard spot to be able to tell us what they need. A lot of them were very forthcoming with me and said I would use it for this, I would use it for this. They had amazing ideas that would benefit the whole town, that would benefit a lot of people who are suffering from the pandemic. Just because it's a government project doesn't mean it's not helping people who are suffering. Certainly, government projects can help people who are adversely affected and can certainly help members of our community. Just tonight, I saw a gentleman in a wheelchair have a very difficult time getting out of the doors of the council chamber because we don't have the handicap buttons to open the doors. That's something we can use ARPA funds to address, that helps members of our community who need some help. There is a restaurant in town who started doing outdoor dining during the pandemic, but his issue was the sidewalk was so uneven and cracked and damaged in front of his business. I went, I was there one night for dinner, and he said to me, can you do something about this sidewalk? And I said, I can, you know, I can certainly call Public Works. And he said, I already called them, they came out, they spray painted it hot pink, and now my tables are all wobbly and my chairs are wobbly, and that was, that was the solution. We can fix things like that with this money. That helps businesses. So I, I don't want to, I think there's a view that maybe government projects are a greedy option, and it's not. I'm looking at government projects as helping our community. And we keep getting told, you know, why would you be against giving it for businesses? Why wouldn't you do this? Why, and I guess conversely, I would ask, why would you be against using some of it for government projects? So I think we have a great compromise here of 25% for the nonprofits and 25% for the businesses and the other 50% for the government projects, and I think that's a wonderful compromise. I'm, I'm okay with spending that on all three of those, I'm not against any of those. I think, I think we, we need to just look at these applications more carefully. I think they're, they're missing some information, and I'm, I'm concerned that if we let the applications go the way that they are, that there are going to be winners and losers chosen, and that concerns me. I just don't think we have it structured enough at this point to go forward with them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. I agree, forward-looking is good. I don't know that our applications necessarily preclude any of that. When we actually get to talk about the applications, we can talk about whether we want to remove the proof of damages or tax returns or whatever, but we're on the bucket thing first, I guess. I mean, Mr. Mayor, would, if 50% was allocated toward government projects, are you in a position where you would put forward projects to fill that bucket?
I don't know how we do that before we know what the community need is. I mean, we can talk about, if you read the Treasury reports, it's very clear, over and over again, they repeat, the populations that are, were stressed, the populations of disadvantage, those populations, over and over again. So before we even find out, we're going to say 50% of this will go, will be held for government. I don't know how we pick a figure before we ever put out an application and find out what, what the need is. So we'll immediately start spending money on government projects before we even have an application back to say what the need is. I don't, I don't understand the concept, right? Because if we're going to say 50, $7 million is available and we can start immediately spending that on government projects, we don't have to wait for applications. Why would we want to do that? And then when the need is expressed later on to say, oh, wow, there is a big need, oh, oh, too bad, we went ahead and spent the money, well, too bad, there's no money for you. Why would we do that? I'm obviously very troubled by what I hear here, and it seems to me it's just not in harmony with what the Rescue Act talks about.
I guess, well, so we're not going to have a strong forward motion on the government side. I think it's redundant, as I said earlier, because it stays within the government. And what I'm really interested in is getting to the application part so that we can get that moving, or we can talk about it, amend it if necessary, get that moving, and then figure out how we're going to adjudicate everything. Pat, you know, go ahead, sorry.
I was going to say, you know, I think there's this misconception that the application doesn't reflect something. I think very clearly that the application reflects the sentiments of the administration, that these funds should be used to fill losses that have been... that these funds should be used to fill losses that have been incurred. That's the underlying theme of all of these. I think there has been some discussion tonight about whether or not that is an appropriate focus. I think there, there are some that have had some discussions on, um, whether or not it should be more forward looking. You know, this application does not reflect that sentiment at all. I've not been privy to any of the discussions at the, the subcommittee level around that. But make no mistake, these very clearly reflect the, the sentiment of the administration that these funds should be used to fill losses that have occurred under the pandemic. At least, that's, that's my.
Great. And I'd like to, I'd like to get to the applications so that we can talk about and adjust those. So, you know, I, so at this point, I'm gonna motion, unless it's accepted as a friendly amendment, to strike the fifty percent government portion of the motion.
Or we could just call the vote on the motion.
I'm gonna leave my amendment, my motion to amend.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't hear a second.
Go ahead. Well, he hasn't made a motion yet.
I did, I just did.
What was your amendment?
To remove the, strike the fifty percent government bucket from the motion.
Oh, that was much shorter than I thought it would be. My apologies. All right, there's an amendment, there's a second on the amendment.
And it, it's not that it won't happen, but I just think it's premature to say, to, to lock up the funds at that point. Why not just keep it? And it's already in the government's side. We're just not gonna lock it in for the, I guess, the perception of the community projects, government projects.
All right, there's a motion to remove the fifty percent portion from the motion on the table, an amendment rather, and there's a second to the amendment. Oh my gosh, all three hands at once. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, I'll, I'll be, I'll be quick. I'm just trying to figure out procedurally where we are. So let's say these applications go out and a committee reviews them. And I'm being told, and people are being cajoled, that we can't approve any expenditure, no matter the need, no matter the person, without the administration saying, this is okay. Is that where we are? I'm, I'm, if we don't have the power to.
Go through the application.
If we don't have the power to appropriate money by ourselves.
All right, you both, you both branches have to agree.
Okay.
That's not a difficult concept, is it? Both branches have to agree how you're going to spend this money.
But procedurally, the way that works is we never get the opportunity to go to the administration. It's been the position, I think it's your office's position, that everything is activated by a request or, uh, suggestion by the administration.
Okay, except that, given the breadth of this program, given all the things that can be done, and the necessary work it is to come to establishing how any part of it is going to move forward, the conversation has to be at an earlier stage where you both agree, this is how we're going to proceed, or we're wasting an awful lot of time.
Understood.
An awful lot of time. So you're, this, this discussion is good. It started with a draft application. This is how the administration saw it, we should start this. And this has been the, this is the conversation with you. You created a subcommittee, great idea. The subcommittee did some work on it, and now we're here to say, okay, are we ready to move any part of this that's been under discussion forward? Because the answer, if the answer is no, well then we're gonna have to start over again. And that involves a conversation between both branches of government to come to an agreement as how to move forward.
Established. So how does that?
I didn't think anybody understood that.
How does that happen though? Because normally, we get in our packet, a letter from the mayor. I request, or I suggest that the council appropriate.
And that's what he's done by submitting these draft applications.
Okay, but I'm talking about the procedure here. Am I to understand that we cannot take the applications and approve them?
No, well, that can be part of the process, if that's how it ends up being.
No, hold on, wait a second. We, we.
He's not put forward a program and said, I want complete control over this entire process, and I want you to approve giving me complete control, control over this whole process.
But if you put, let's say a business puts in an application, and we think it's, it is acceptable, and the mayor does not think it's acceptable, that's what you're saying, we have to agree?
No. I think you have to agree as to what the procedure is going to be on who and how applications are going to be approved.
Okay, but.
I don't, I don't see the two, I don't see the, the mayor taking one application at a time and putting it in front of it as it's, I, I don't. I mean, you can, you can craft this program between the two branches any way you wish, but it, if you, if, certainly if you establish a subcommittee, you give it some authority, or you don't give it some authority, you will decide what is the progression of approval process. How complicated is it gonna be?
No, you've told us that we don't have that power. We can't.
The two of you combined have that power.
Okay, so we both have to agree.
You have to agree on the whole damn thing!
Okay, so if an applicant, the question was, if an application is submitted and all nine of us think it's appropriate, but the administration does not, that person doesn't get a check.
You know, I can't imagine that, I can't imagine that that's how you're gonna set up the approval process of this.
I was told that we.
You're gonna create a program.
You.
I, 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 I give up. I gotta tell you, I really give up.
If we can't write a check without a request, which is what I was told before.
You can't write a check, no. You have no right, check writing capability.
So the question was, how does the thing get paid? My question was, if we all think, you know, John Smith calls us up and says, my business put in an application, I think it's a great application, lobbies all of us to approve it, but the mayor never comes to us to say.
Then you design a program by which everybody agrees that the council gets a final stamp of approval on every application, or some application.
But if the mayor never comes to us with the request.
You're, well, you're going to agree as to how the program is going to be operated.
Okay.
That will be agreement between both branches. Otherwise, you know, give the money back.
Ah, believe me.
If I can help, I wanna see this be successful. Why, why are we spending the time that, with this that we are? We need to deal with.
Because if Park and Rec puts in an application for the pool, and you don't find that to be acceptable, but a majority of this body does, it doesn't happen.
Well, I, what I'm saying is that if all we're gonna do is a pool with this money, no, there would not be an approval. We need to help people. So if we're going to help people, and businesses, nonprofits, then ultimately, if we're dealing with that, other things can be taken into account. But instead, everyone wants to start with municipal projects. I find that very troublesome. So the money will all be used up, and now the people who should be receiving money won't have any money to, to receive.
I understand your position, thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So I guess my concern is, I'm not, I'm not wedded to the fifty, twenty, twenty-five idea, but I'm trying to set some sort of context here, because we're, we're sort of like, what's happened from the beginning is we were handed the application, which I understand we need to have to have a starting point. And then we've been lobbied harder on this issue than on any other issue in the six years I've been on the council, bar none, right? And, and then we, we sort of cajoled people to come to the meetings and, and make statements with regard to, you know, lack of compassion and all this other nonsense. I don't think I was ever philosophically on board with the idea that we're gonna go back in time and try to pay people back for what they lost during the pandemic. It can't happen. It's just economically, it's, it's impossible, because there's no way that we're gonna get involved in all these people's business arrangements to determine who lost what and who did what. So I think philosophically, we're just at different places. And by us, I mean myself and the administration are in a different focus in terms of where I think this money should be helping people out. I think we all want to help people. So I think it's disingenuous to suggest that we don't want to help people, right? Because we're all here to help people. I mean, this is why we all ran for office. So I think what we need to do is come to a consensus on what it is we want, what, what we're looking to do with this money. At the end of the day, I don't want to flush thirteen million dollars down the toilet, right? So I want to be able to look around and say, where did this money go? Who did this help? Like, if businesses have projects that they want to move forward with, I'm okay with that, but I just don't see that sending a bunch of checks is gonna accomplish what the ARPA fund was designed for. So the fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, I see as, as it was a, a starting point to sort of get the, focus the conversation. Um, we're gonna send out a bunch of applications, we're gonna get a bunch of applications back, and it's gonna be people with requests for money. And I'm not sure how that gets us to assess the need. Um, you know, it's the, it's sort of the select few people that were, explain the necessity of the application, we'll fill it out, they'll send it back, and then I guess, I guess we'll go from there. My biggest concern with this whole process is just sort of the idea that the government picks winners and cronyism. And that is, that's the, my greatest fear. I just, as long as the process is, is transparent, at the end of the day, I don't really care who gets the money, as long as it's appropriate, fair, and it's not just, you know, the people that sort of have government connections. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to this motion choosing the amounts first before the applications go out, you know, I look back at all the other government programs that were put out, PPP, you know, the, probably the most, uh, well-known. Several of us here applied for that, received it. It's public, it's public record, so we know how it works. But what happened first was Congress approved the amount of money that was going to the businesses. They didn't put out an application and say, let's see how many businesses apply, and then the SBA says, oh, we had, you know, four trillion dollars, and the government said, okay, well, now we have a problem because we don't have four trillion dollars. No, they decided the amount first, and then they asked for people to apply. So I think we need to do the same thing. I think that's what this motion accomplishes. Um, so we just, we have a limit on how much we're going to spend. You know, very, very early on in the subcommittee and even in our general council meetings, I was for government projects. I thought the whole thing should be spent on government projects. And through this process, I've, um, listened to everybody and I'm kind of willing to compromise, and now we have this fifty percent government projects, twenty-five percent nonprofit, twenty-five percent business. I think it's a good compromise. But I feel like maybe there's no compromise on the other side of that. So I, I'm hoping that we can, we can see this as a good compromise and keep going forward with this. Uh, but for Mr. Regan, one, one question in regards to that. Is it uncommon or common, in your, with your experience with this, for towns to choose the percentages prior to the applications going out? Is that common practice?
It's fifty-fifty.
Okay.
I'd say it's fifty-fifty.
Okay.
With the consideration that once projects begin to get solicited, if they come back in a different mix than what was originally established, that the elected body has the ability to revise that. So you set a guideline of, in, in this case, fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. As you solicit applications and those come in, you may find that there are fewer worthy government projects, and there are more worthy business projects. So you may ultimately come back and adjust that fifty, twenty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five at some point down the road, once you get all the information. But it is a starting point by which you can focus your attention and focus your efforts and begin to, you know, get some clarity around what those community needs are.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question. This, this may be for you, Mr. Senna. I found from, there was a memo in the last budget, or I should say the current budget, I believe, April first, two thousand twenty-one, the letter, um, the cover letter from the mayor. It mentions that ARPA funds to offset local government revenue, um, it says, we will submit to the town council an appropriation request for the ARPA funds upon receipt in the current fiscal year. And then, um, at the very bottom, it says that nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan to replace lost revenue due to the pandemic was in that budget. Is that money, has that been spent, or is that just sitting somewhere? Do you know that?
It hasn't been spent, it's just a hole in the budget.
Okay, so it was budgeted in the current year, but it's just sitting in a, like a suspense account almost until?
So all the ARPA money has been put into the ARPA fund, sitting in deferred revenue, nothing has been spent.
Okay, so this nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, was that, was that just an initial?
So when Mr. Boz prepared the budget, there wasn't much guidance on it. There was a revenue loss that wasn't really fully explained, so he, his interpretation of it was that we might be able to get that money and use it for the purpose that he put in the budget.
Okay, but it has not been spent. So it's, that nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars is acting just as the rest of the ARPA money that we've received?
Correct. And it, what's gonna happen is it's gonna eat into our surplus, because that revenue is not gonna come into the budget that we're in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Allenson.
Um, just weighing in here, um, the reason I'm uncomfortable allocating even fifty percent to municipal projects at this point is because we continue to have these arguments over authority and paying checks and, uh, who's going to do what. Um, the reality is that if we wanted to, as a body, modify this, I believe there would be more continued arguing, um, in, of this manner. And I don't find it to be particularly constructive. I think if we were to say, we'll leave fifty percent unallocated at this point and potentially leave it open for future projects, I am not opposed to municipal projects. I am opposed to defining an amount that we will apply to municipal projects before I have an idea of what the community is, what the people who have needs, people, businesses, nonprofits, however we want to phrase that. Until I know how those needs hash out, I'm uncomfortable applying any amount to municipal projects, because I believe that this body will try to hold us to that fifty percent as a guarantee. So that is my exact reasoning for not supporting fifty percent. I'm not opposed one hundred percent to municipal projects. I am only opposed to being held to a standard that I can't guarantee that will, that will actually happen.
All right, I see no more hands. So first, uh, the roll call will be on the vote to amend the motion to remove the fifty percent to municipal projects.
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni?
Yes, the amendment passes. All right, now the, uh, roll call on the motion as amended. There's fifty percent now unallocated in the motion.
That's fine, thank you.
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni?
Yes, that motion passed. Counselor Laffin.
As a starting point, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application drafts as presented, um, and I am expecting and looking for changes in amendments.
Second.
Uh, moved, seconded by Counselor Testa, I heard. Counselor Fishbein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarity's sake, um, I know the applications were not in the backup, but I believe we received an email with them. And based upon the representations earlier, am I to understand that a portion of those applications is being withdrawn? Through you, what do you mean? Why, the packet that we got was a brick of, uh, I think, three applications, one of which was individuals. And I, I heard earlier that we were not doing individuals' applications. So am I to understand that what's before us is to approve the three applications in the packet, or are the individuals' applications not part of that anymore?
If the individual portion is part of the packet, then, uh, I would definitely, I would support amendment removing it. It shouldn't have been, the three sections should have been, um, one for businesses, one generally for nonprofit, like nonprofit qualification, and the third section should have been, um, approving, like, funding for a nonprofit's program or project. Yeah, so, all right, so whatever, what I ended up sending, I guess, includes the individual is, it doesn't look like it's, it's not amended probably, right? There's no red markings in it?
There are, there are red markings.
That's the nonprofit or the business side. Scroll down further, the other way.
I do have it.
That's the beginning of the image, individual eligibility. Okay, so yeah, so my motion then is to strike the individual section. Okay, so yeah, so my motion then is to strike the individual section, application. Or my, I will amend my own motion to strike the individual portion.
Okay.
And I apologize for its submission. I meant to delete it.
No problem. And just for clarity's sake, we have a 10-page document that is the backup. And am I to understand that it would be page, I can't tell, pages are not numbered, so...
Top says individual eligibility on it.
Yes, understood. But this is, we got this entire packet as one. So I'm just going to count the pages so that perhaps for the record, we can understand what we're doing for five. Okay, so beginning with page six, it appears, I'll wish you to catch up. Okay. So is it just page six that we are removing? Was it six and then on?
Page six. Page six. It's the only, it's the page that says individual eligibility at the top.
Okay.
Just that page. And then, as noted in the email, so this, this is the same information that was sent prior to the last subcommittee meeting. The only changes were on the last, on page seven, where it says Town of Wallingford American Rescue Plan Program Request Form. Anywhere you see the word program, it's to be a program slash project. This is for nonprofits.
Yes, okay, that would make sense.
Yep, and then it was just a, you know, a type of thing. And then in the section under business eligibility and nonprofit eligibility, those were modified to, should have been modified to say 60, or those were modified after our last subcommittee. Businesses or nonprofits must have 60 or fewer full-time equivalent employees, not 25 or not stricken entirely, as it appeared in the original draft that we went into that meeting with.
Okay, so, and I'm not looking, I'm just looking to have a clear
Yep.
...knowledge as to what is before us, because it appears that there are changes to the backup that are not in a document that has been presented to us. So I don't know how, Mr. Chairman, we handle that issue, but if I could ask, the portion, Counselor Laffin, you were just talking about where the clause must have 25 or fewer full-time equivalent employees, it is stricken. What is your understanding as to the change?
It is, it is no longer stricken. It was originally. It was no longer stricken, and the number 25 was changed to 60.
And why was that determined?
There was like three and a half hour meetings. It was, originally, they felt that 25 was too low, so we struck it because, and Counselors Andrew was a large proponent of this, he figured there's a limitation of 500 per the final rule, and why not just let that be the ceiling? And then in the last meeting, it came back around and we discussed at 60. He still quasi-opposed it. He, and he noted that he supported moving the application forward to the full council for discussion, and he wanted it noted that he wanted a discussion on the 60 versus unlimited. But he didn't want to hold up the whole thing or vote against the entire draft application just because of that one component. Same for the nonprofit. And the part of the consideration with a staff of 500 full-time equivalent is that they could be a larger company, could be, they would be a larger company that may or may not have the necessary staff and legal organization to take more full and articulate advantage of the program, when the idea, the concept was to help smaller businesses in town.
Okay, so did somebody inquire of, you know, program planning or something like that, as to the number of businesses that have, let's say, since you arbitrarily selected 60, that have 61 full-time employees, who we would be, like, excluding potentially?
No, we did not run, we didn't want to create a bias either by understanding which companies might be excluded or not excluded.
Well, no, I, I understand, but, I mean, you know, just focus, and, you know, we could do this for days.
Oh, I, I agree, but you make it 75 or 80, you know, and so on. And then what's the number, well, not one more?
Yeah, I mean, why have a number at all if the business has a, you know, if, if we're going to focus on forward stuff, right? And, you know, the business has a, a great, let's say they have a fantastic apprenticeship program, you know, I love manufacturing apprentices, right? Because we, we need more people in that industry. And, but they're a, you know, they're a larger business, but they have a smaller subsidiary here in town, but they want to bolster their manufacturing apprentice program. That's something that I might be in support of, you know?
I agree. And my interpretation of that, the smaller subsidiary is the number we're looking for, not the larger corporate structure that might exist elsewhere. But that, yeah, that's exactly what we wanted to discuss at the full. We knew at the subcommittee level that we were not going to be making any final decisions. Our goal was to get a discussionable draft here for this discussion. So I'm not at all offended to adjust that number or remove the number.
And how do you want to handle, do you want to, I mean?
If you, if you want to strike the entire thing in the same vein that Counselors Andrew had discussed, I would, I would recommend that you motion to strike that line out of the business eligibility and the nonprofit eligibility.
Okay, I make a motion to strike the line that says must have 25 or fewer full-time equivalent employees.
Counselor Laffin, do you accept that as a friendly amendment to your proposed applications?
No. No.
And just, just to clarify, which probably won't get a second either, apparently what the document says, it's not before us, is must have 60 or fewer. So I'm striking something that doesn't exist. So. But it didn't get a second, so we go on.
Okay.
Yep. Why were just 501(c)(3)'s selected? Oh, well, it appears, yeah, that you'd have to be a 501(c)(3).
The discussion at that point was that that was a measurable marker, and that came from the original draft and from the consultant and the administration as a manner of measuring their viability and their legal standing.
Yeah, for, for nonprofits, the, if, if I'm remembering the act correctly, it's 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(13)'s, 501(c)(19)'s are the three entities that they specifically mentioned as eligible.
What's a 13 and a 19?
I'd have to go back and look at what those are.
Are you sure 501(c)(4)'s aren't included?
I distinctly remember that c4's are not.
Okay, because that would answer the question before, remember, the public, I think churches are 501(c)(4). So there was a question about mosques, synagogues, that kind of stuff, so.
Right, but they can have non-501(c)(4) organizations like housing.
Those would be 501(c)(3).
Or limited liability corporations or other insurabilities like that, so.
That would be a sub.
Corporate structure, correct.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be the 501(c)(4) that's putting the application, but the 501(c)(3). So for their purposes. The clause that says serve Town of Wallingford residents or businesses, how is that ascertained? It appears to be very subjective. So, you know.
They'd have to describe it. They'd have to tell you what they.
Well, we're talking about the eligibility. There's a line that merely says, serve Town of Wallingford residents or businesses. So I live in Wallingford, I go to the Dunkin' Donuts in Meriden. It doesn't require that they are located in Wallingford, right? That's not what it says. So I'm, I'm just trying to.
I, I think we can clarify that, you know, what I've seen at other localities is that they need to be a licensed business in the town.
Okay, that, that would make sense, but that's not what's here, so.
I, I thought the application had to give your, your address, right?
Yes, but the eligibility requirements I'm looking at, their could, their address could be anywhere.
But I thought it was a requirement that they have a business in Wallingford.
That's not.
No?
That's not the document that I'm looking at. It's not what it says.
Which line? Which line is it?
It's line three. It says, serve Town of Wallingford residents or businesses.
That's for the nonprofit. So you can have a larger organization that runs programs for the Town of Wallingford. That's the whole point of that. That's why they're said that way.
Okay, but that's, so.
I think people are confusing whether you're talking about businesses or nonprofits.
Yeah, I was confused.
Talking about nonprofits.
I'm, I'm just going off the document that we were given. It says not-for-profit organization eligibility. I was just talking about 501(c)(3)'s, and I'm going to the very next line.
I think that was just the, I mean, I, I don't know about the subcommittee, but I thought that that was what some of the, some of the nonprofits serve Wallingford, their off, whether their main office is in Wallingford or not is another story.
So we don't want the Spanish community of Suddington to apply, but the United Way of Meriden, Wallingford, which is physical address is in Meriden, serves Wallingford residents.
Why, so?
We just want to make sure that the clientele of the nonprofit, that the target audience is Wallingford.
Okay.
Residents.
At a certain percentage, or, you know, the, the homeless shelter in, in Middletown takes overflow from Columbus House?
So I guess the answer to their question would be yes, and that would be part of the consideration of the adjudication, the consultant's group would, would verify whether that was, they were marked for eligibility or not.
But if, and that's, I'm just looking, I mean, does the majority of their service have to be Wallingford, or, you know, I did a tour of the Columbus House a few years ago. They mentioned to me that they had one person in the last four years that had been there, but they do service the town, right? They're, they're available.
Yep.
Is that criteria that would meet what is being talked about here?
It could. I guess it would be up to the adjudication group to decide.
Okay, so.
In order to qualify, to even apply, you have to serve Wallingford residents or businesses.
Okay, so as drafted, they could serve 1%.
They could.
As, as drafted.
Maybe they serve 1% and they're drafted, their proposed program is to increase that to 10 through the spending of money. I was hypothetical. I mean, if you want to, do you want to suggest a way for it to be rewarded?
I did. It would only make sense because, you know, you're trying to gauge need in our community and, you know, you try and keep it to our community. So, you know, I would suggest, just to throw it out there, that they serve, that the, the focus of the entity is to serve, I don't know how to word this properly, 50%? 50% purpose of serving Wallingford residents, is that properly?
50% of Wallingford residents?
No, I mean, they're, I, I know, it's.
Oh, you mean their workload is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's basically what I'm saying, you know, so that you don't get, you know...
What I'm seeing in, in other localities where you have these nonprofit organizations, they may serve across jurisdictions, is that the eligibility to participate in the funding is that they are serving Wallingford residents or Wallingford businesses. But when you get to the reimbursement of how it's funded, it would be structured on a per-resident basis, or somehow you're tying it in so that the, the reimbursement that you're paying for out of your Wallingford ARPA dollars are for Wallingford residents only, those services that are being rendered. So I, I want to decouple the, sort of the, the program eligibility to participate in it from the, the funding mechanism that gets agreed upon, once you've decided that this is a worthy project that needs to be done, that then you begin that discussion of, all right, how are the mechanics of the funding of this going to occur?
Understood, but that creates another problem, and I totally agree with that situation. But we have a, we have a funding source and we have a deadline, right? And we have a requirement to appropriate. So if we say to some nonprofit, let's say they're from out of town, for each Wallingford resident that you service over the next year, you get $20, we'll say, okay? They've got to show it, you know, fill out some sort of form, they, they submit it to whatever, and they're reimbursed based upon that contractual arrangement. Okay, that's, that's the deal at the time that you've entered into it. But over that period of time that we're allotting for that, they don't meet that. So now we've allotted funds for something that isn't going to get expended or doesn't get expended, and that's sort of irresponsible, in, in my opinion. So I understand.
So that's where the monitoring comes in, and that's no different than a construction project that may come in under budget or over budget. So the, the way that I've seen these applications worded is, especially in multi-jurisdictional organizations, it's, we will serve up to 50 Wallingford residents, you know, and come up with the price that it's going to take to, to serve those. And then that information about how many residents are served in that program are tracked. And if it comes in, if it starts coming in under that, you know, things are adjusted accordingly.
But the problem is, is that we have allotted money and we have said we're appropriating towards this expenditure based upon the representations, this amount of money. That is reserved, and as a result of that, you're shutting out others.
Correct, and there's.
And that's the problem.
I mean, I don't think anybody is going to have perfect foresight on any of these. So you, you do the same thing on a construction contract, where you, you set aside up to $5 million for construction of, of something. If it comes in at four over time, you've shut out other organizations for $1 million because you've set aside up to $5 million. So I don't, I don't see how it's different on a, on a human service.
Well, it's different because then you're dealing with a bank or you're dealing with a bank account that, you know.
Right, but we're not, we're not providing them the money upfront. These are, these are going to be on reimbursement basis.
They're not shut out of the process, they get to apply. I mean, everybody gets, they all get to apply.
But at the end of the day, if we have money left over, we haven't expended it, we don't get to keep it. In a construction project, you get to keep it.
That's why he suggested that these agreements end in sufficient time prior to the end of 2024, so that the money can be reallocated. I think that's an excellent, that's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
I'm allowed one a day.
One a day.
I used it here.
That's it.
Took me until 10:45 at night to do it, but I got it finally.
So I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I, I suggested that we have some sort of percentage, but I guess we can try and work that out through the, the app, well, as we move forward. The good standing issue, you know, what I saw, the committee meetings, there wasn't a lot of attention to accountability. How, how are we supposed to ascertain the good standing of an applicant now?
I think that that's something the applicant would put in their application package to get that certificate from the Department of Revenue.
So they would, so DRS issues some sort, or, or do we require them to submit to us? Because it's not only, it's not only state, but it's also federal and local. So we would get good standing certificates from all three levels?
No, what I, what I've seen is the state level.
Okay, because I'm just looking at, once again, reading what's been presented to us. Organization must be in good standing with DRS and be current on its federal, state, and local tax obligations. So I guess that would... I didn't see that we were requiring them to submit. I didn't see that we were requiring them to submit their tax filings. Did I miss that? Or they're just checking off a box on the application?
A number, correct me if I'm wrong, on the nonprofit as an example on that page, on number 17, it says gross revenue reported to tax authorities. That's all. It doesn't actually ask for the tax. Let me just scroll back on the business.
I thought I saw.
For nonprofits, the 990 is, is a public document, so it's not.
Yeah, but I'm not going to go chase 990s. I've done it before. Are we, are we requiring them to submit 990s?
I thought so.
I thought I saw it in, in one document that I saw, but I don't see it on this document.
It's on the second to last page. It's in, it's part of the program project is where you saw it. And it asks for attachments that the applicant's IRS 501(c)(3) determination letter be included along with the most recent audited financial statement and the IRS tax form 990.
You said the last page?
It's of the second page of the program project proposal.
Yep.
Which is page eight, let me see.
Oh, yeah, okay, attachments.
That's where you saw it.
Okay, so that's just for a program proposal, right? It's not for a.
Well, and what we're, what we're going to get to is if we're, if we're going with the forward direction approach, then really only a nonprofit would be applying for the program or project, since we're not talking restitution. And then we will need to amend the business portion in some level, maybe, and I don't know if you can fix it up or you need actual, you know, word-by-word direction from us to include something about what are you going to do, you know, moving forward kind of thing. Because right now, these, this application is more like, do you qualify? Do you meet our, like, the standards we're looking for?
But it was my understanding that nonprofits have essentially two opportunities. There's a institutional grant, so to speak.
Yep.
And then there's a program grant.
That was the original discussion, but I think a lot of tonight in consultation with the consultant, we were liking the idea of the forward thinking, and that is not something that we focused on in the subcommittees. So I personally haven't been in all of those meetings, and, and more likely, or I would like to have these focus on forward thinking, forward motion, instead of the rearview mirror as described earlier. And that was just something we did not discuss. We were just going with the draft applications that we, that we had and making our modifications for, for tonight, which is part of the reason why we are looking for the full council to make all the decisions.
I mean, if you were all in agreement of that, then that's something that could be worked on to change, to change the focus of it to being forward.
Yeah, tweak the, whatever it needs to, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna make, I, I was gonna make a motion because that, that is something that appears. So I guess I'll make, well, it's not I guess, I will. I'll make a motion that the council focus its attention on forward projects in contemplation of grants under the ARPA project.
So there's a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
I withdrew it. I withdrew the other motion.
No, Tom's motion to approve the.
Yeah, so you're making an amendment. So, I mean, I can accept it as a friendly, but I don't know. And maybe that's worth a separate discussion, a vote, just to be sure that we're all on the same page. But I do agree with that, and I second it.
So you're, you're accepting it as a friendly amendment?
I would like to, but I want to give the other counselors an opportunity if they have a major problem with it, which it looks like somebody.
I don't have a problem. I just don't understand. We don't know who's deciding who gets the money for a project. So the motion is that the council.
This is just the application part. The next, the next phase is the next question.
The motion, what, what's your motion again?
Is to have the, let me spit out all those words again?
Have the focus of the council.
No, the focus of the applications be on forward projects.
Got it. I thought you said the council. Thank you.
I might have thrown council on there.
So. Can we, can you all give me a second? Good God. Who seconded your motion? Was it?
I seconded Craig's motion. Oh.
You accepted it as a friendly amendment. Would you, Autumn, do you accept the amendment? You did or you didn't?
I, I didn't because I thought, I wasn't sure if we wanted to discuss it. I'll, you know, I'll accept it as a friendly motion, a friendly amendment. It's going to save us time. Let's go. Next.
Counselor Todd, do you second the friendly amendment?
Autumn.
Allenson, yeah.
I second the friendly amendment.
All right. I've got, I've got, he's still got the floor. Are you celebrating Easter on Thursday?
I think that's the joke.
Counselor Fishbein, are you still working on this?
I mean, as I said before, we can play this, you know, for a while. Is it, is it helpful if the motion passes to put it back in your hands to give us something that's a little bit more in line with that? Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll accede the floor for right now. If it passes, then I'll punt.
All right. Counselor Allenson is next. You still want to talk? Okay, you're on to your Easter ham, Counselor Todd.
Thank you. I hope my mom is preparing the Easter meal right now. If these are to go through, how do we plan on advertising these? Because I am fearful that only the people who have been on kind of the inside loop, businesses and nonprofits, are going to know. And then, I mean, I just don't know if there's a plan to advertise. I know you've done plans for other channels with social media and with websites, but do we have a plan?
I don't know if the mayor wants to, in the past, we have talked about, well, once we determine the, the period, whether it be 60 or 90 days, that will, 90 days would help, I guess. But we talked about including in the electric bill. Is that what it was?
Yeah, we've, we've, and I believe Jack has talked about putting together a, a program as well.
Yeah, we would do a orientation webinar, whatever you want to call it, where we discuss the application process, what makes an allowable project, all that sort of stuff, what the timeline is for the adjudication. And more importantly, you know, what requirements the applicant is going to have to the town should they be successful in obtaining the money. So that, again, I colloquially say, you know, this is not free money, but these entities do need to have certain reporting that comes up to the town quarterly, that the, the town will then be able to submit to U.S. Treasury. So we, we get all of that into one hour. We did, I actually might have gone a little bit over budget today. I think we're about an hour 10 when I did that down in Meriden earlier this afternoon. We'd be able to record it so that folks that couldn't attend in person would be able to play it back at their infinite leisure. So there, there are ways that we can get that communication out.
And how people.
Yeah, I think we're, we'd put something on our website. There'll be a link with the portal where they can get the information. We'd obviously, as well, probably have a notice on the government channel and press release.
Good, yeah, I'm, I'm glad because I, I just want to make sure that, I don't, I don't want to hear, you know, after the 90 days is up, well, I didn't know, you know, and then it's too late.
You will, you will hear that, I promise you. You've, you've done everything that you could by going into all those channels to, to promote this. So there, there are always going to be some that, you know, and we turn, you tell me 90 days, we turn off the portal at 11:59:59.
Yeah.
So that no, you know, nobody can get back in after, after 12 o'clock. So that is equitable to, to everybody.
Absolutely. I just, I had heard of other towns that are using, I'm, I'm not a huge social media fan, but other towns have used Twitter and Facebook, and they've sent out email blasts and text blasts, and I just, I don't know that we have that capability. So I think any, anything that we do have the capability of, we want to make sure we use everything.
We will, we're using business organizations, you know, the, the Chamber Commerce as well as WCI, any other mechanism.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My own, my other concern at this point, well, I think I've said I've had a bunch of concerns, but presently, we haven't decided yet who is deciding this money being spent. And now that it came up, Counselor Fishbein brought up that it must serve the town of Wallingford. I didn't really, I didn't really catch on to that. But now that it's been brought up, that's a concern because there could be some national 501(c)(3)'s that apply for this that are not in Wallingford, but maybe serve Wallingford. Some of those are more controversial. I think, you know, we know all of the ones in Wallingford. We know who they are. We know what they do. But, you know, for example, Planned Parenthood, fairly controversial 501(c)(3), they have an office in Meriden, probably serve Wallingford. So who decides that when they, when they apply? And then maybe people, you know, maybe they get money and they met all the criteria, and then somebody finds out, well, you know, instead of, instead of sidewalks, we gave Planned Parenthood $10,000, and maybe a lot of people are turned off by that. So I'm now concerned about that aspect of potentially controversial 501(c)(3)'s and how that would look for, for us as a council, for whoever's deciding this. I certainly don't want the, the public to, to feel that, that money went to something that they would, that ethically or morally goes against anything that, that they might stand for. I think that would be a very tough position for us to be in, so I'm concerned about that aspect of this now. I don't know if anyone agrees or not, but now that that's come up, that's an issue. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
The world is not hearing you.
I know. I just started handling this like a workshop with you. Sorry. So I was just, no mic in it. Well, if there are, if there are any additional concerns about the specifics of either of these, we need to go back to the committee. There's really no alternative. I'm not going to solve it tonight. Right? If all of a sudden, I mean, and I don't object to that. We've been meeting regularly. And if there are still some, some issues that have popped up, that's where we're going to hash it out. We share it with the council, and then we go from there. Or, or we, or, or we just approve them? I mean, there's only one of two choices. We can't rewrite them tonight in spite of efforts to the contrary. You know, the, the subcommittee is where the work is done. We bring it here and everybody says, okay, I, I like it, I don't like it, I have problems, and we'll go back to the subcommittee and hash it out. But this is not the place where, you know, you, if you want to, if you want to wordsmith this, come to the subcommittee meetings. And if we come up with something new, as Counselor Todd had just brought up, a very real possibility, let's talk about it in our subcommittee and go back. We miss it, we, so we wait another week. It's okay. And the subcommittee is just about finished with their TikTok video that we're putting together. So everyone's going to hear about this. Counselor Todd is running that.
Will they be dancing?
He put you in charge of it. That's what happens when you step out of the room.
Right.
All right.
Wait a minute, I thought this counselor was going to be the one that gets put in charge of all those things since he's not here.
Yep. Counselor laughing.
Yeah, so, good point. I think that comes up in probably the more the adjudication part. And Mr. Reagan or Reagan? Sorry.
Uh, Reagan's fine.
Well, what do you like?
Reagan.
Reagan, okay. What is, what are other towns doing in regards to something like that? Have you experienced?
Through the adjudication?
Yeah, like with an, with an example like Planned Parenthood or another, what?
Oh, I, I have not seen any, any, there has not been any discussion on that, on that particular issue. I would say there, there has been some discussion on, on national organizations, you know, coming in. And again, I think that that is going to be, in my inelegant words, you know, in the racking and stacking of all of the applications that come in, you know, there are absolutely going to be applications that you will not accept, that are very worthy applications. So just because someone is applying for the money doesn't automatically, and they meet all the eligibility criteria, doesn't mean they're going to get the money, because you're going to have likely more applications come in for more dollars than you have available to spend. So there has to be a, a winnowing down of that, which I know that the, the nonprofit committee or the nonprofit application has got a scoring rubric that they've put out against that that I think is very valuable. We need to do the same sort of thing with the, the businesses to, to come up with a similar scoring rubric that will help you do that. And then you will be able to rank those, and that's going to be how you can begin the difficult process of winnowing through all of the, the applications for making approvals or rejections.
All right, thank you.
If I may as well, I know it sounds like there might be another subcommittee being come up. I could respectfully request that I be invited to attend that.
You could, you could come to all of them.
And help, you know, in any way I can, keep.
Probably a week from today.
I know it's, it's a late hour. I just want to commend council for the progress that's been made tonight. It may not feel like it, but I feel like we've advanced the ball down the field, you know. Can I use the word matriculating the ball down the field, like for some football fans out there? So I appreciate the diligence that everybody is taking on this.
So we're at a first down, but we're still near the other end zone.
I know, that's all right. It's all right. But we're moving.
Good. So the question becomes, do we push through to approve the applications tonight? Do we send them back, or do we send them back to committee for further wordsmithing?
We are, my understanding is the motion is to send, the amended motion is to send it to the consultant for an adjustment of, towards the forward-thinking approach.
Got it.
While incorporating all the other changes that we've talked about. And they will more or less be ready, hopefully, by the time the full council meets in two weeks to push a button if we decide. My other hope is that the subcommittee will meet a week from tonight. It's not Wednesday yet, right? Tuesday, a week from tonight.
Still got a couple of minutes.
Right. And, and then hammer out the adjudication part and hopefully have something then that the full council can discuss also at that same meeting. So, and if we're not ready, then we're not, but that we would pull the trigger on both at the same time so that the applicant, the people applying would understand what the review committee would look like.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I will have the revisions back to you in time for your subcommittee meeting.
Great.
Next week so that you can review those changes. And then, again, come up with the adjudication process, how that comes forward so that that package can be presented to the, the council in two weeks.
And we've been sharing all of our documents with the, with the full council, even though it's a subcommittee work group or whatever. So any of the counselors that are not on the subcommittee, when that draft comes in, please feel free to either attend the meeting or to send your comments or changes, and we can review and discuss them either at that subcommittee, or I guess you could save them for the full, full council, but.
Counselor Fishbein, then Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible that we can get some input from perhaps Mr. Ryan about in particular that cutoff that appears to be arbitrary, the 60, you know? Oh, he did? Well, perhaps, you know, if he gave the number, his reasoning for giving that number?
Yeah, I can, we can let him respond. We'll have him email the council. His support was actually for the original 25, so he, his compromise, or, you know, he, he said that the EDC, they had discussed it, would be comfortable with 60 as well. They felt that that, in their experience with the area, was the, was a threshold for what he expressed was a concern that a larger organization would have, the legal structure to be savvy enough to manipulate and take advantage of the system that they don't really need.
However, now that we are changing this focus, a, you know, Walmart may want to put a bus shelter on their property that we've been fighting for, for 15 years now, you know. on their property that we've been fighting for for 15 years now, you know, maybe they would work together with us on that. You know, they blocked us and I don't need to get there, but.
Well, of course they'll put it up if we pay for it.
Well, let's do it. I mean, that's something that we've been fighting for, for, don't need to get into it. But they would not be able to apply under this structure.
I will email Tim and have him write an explanation to the full council.
Thank you.
On the EDC stance. It's not his. It's the EDC.
All right. Dare I ask any questions, comments from the public? Oh, sorry, Counsel Marone.
That's all right. This will be real quick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we did make some good progress tonight, especially on the sort of the focus of it, which I think was the biggest part. And I guess I would ask Vice Chairman Laffin, when the committee goes back, I think the next big nut to crack is going to be how we organize, who actually reviews the applications and comes up with the recommendations and all that.
That will be the primary agenda.
So I guess I just wanted to throw it out there that I don't think that that should be an all, you know, inside the administration function. I think that the public should be represented, you know, if I had my druthers.
My personal preference is community involvement.
Thank you very much, sir.
Now, come on up.
Sean Doherty, Executive Director for the Wallingford Family YMCA. Just to get back to the FTE, just asking flexibility in regards to the nonprofit application. At the Y, we have 35 full times. So we're under the umbrella for that. However, we have 194 part-time employees and about 25 to 30 seasonal full-time employees for day camp and all that kind of good stuff. So you add all of that, you know, our FTE was in around 78, 81, depending on seasonality and all that kind of good stuff. So we definitely ask for your flexibility in that regards to fall within that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to adjust that now? I would, yeah, I mean, I would prefer not to exclude out of the gate the Y if we don't, you want to drop, jump it to 100.
Well, but that's exactly why I moved to get rid of the line because it should be the project driving the application and not the entity. I, so.
Nobody seconded it, though.
Well, no, I understand. Nobody seconded it.
No.
I will, but, I mean, because then the next argument is, you know, the guy who's a little bit larger, who, you know, is just as respected as Sean, has got, you know, a great entity and project. I don't want to do that. This should be to benefit everybody. So, well, I can, I can remotion to strike that line that currently says must have at least 60 FTE from the application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the strike-iness. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the amendment, please?
Okay. So is this the motion to approve applications as amended?
No, we're not there yet. This is the motion, this is the motion to strike the language that limits the size, the employee size of the applicant.
Okay. Let me just write it.
Correctly phrase that. Thank you.
Okay. Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
Yes.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
No.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
I vote no. The motion passes. So the amendment sticks. And now if you can call the roll on the motion.
What is the motion again? Because.
Have you been tracking that, Tom?
The motion is to, as modified from the friendly amendment from Counsel Fishbein, to send this amended, these amended applications to the consultant to polish and to adjust towards a forward motion application to come back for our review at the next full council meeting.
And now to strike that.
At the subcommittee meeting.
Well, it'll be ready by then.
Right.
But the full council is the one.
And yet, and yes.
That's part of the, yes.
It's as amended.
As amended.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, Allenson.
Yes.
Carmody.
Yes.
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Tada.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes, the motion passes. Is that all we have for ARPA tonight? Yes. Onto number nine. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver for the Board of Education for the purpose of entering into a new school transportation agreement with specialty transportation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we have the Finance Director and the Board of Ed Chair here with us along with the Law Department.
Good morning.
You're 45 minutes early.
I won't be when we leave.
Thank you. It's all right.
Good evening.
Good evening. What's going on?
We supposed to.
You're supposed to tell us why you're here.
Well, I'm supposed to tell you who I am first, right?
Oh, yeah, for the record.
Business Manager for Board of Ed.
Tammy Raccio, Board Chair.
Yeah, we heard a lot about you.
So thank you for fitting us in tonight. I know it was kind of a long night for you folks. We're here to talk about a bid waiver for our transportation. And what I wanted to do was just kind of go through what we want to do and why we're doing it and then explain the financial impact. Okay?
I think the mic needs to be closer to you.
How's that?
Better.
Did you hear what I said, though, or should I repeat?
I heard you, but it was the media department that's not hearing you so much.
All right, thanks. So we're asking for a waiver on transportation to basically contract with specialty transportation for five years. And the primary reason is we've had some challenges with transportation.
With your current contract.
Excuse me?
With your current.
With the current contract provider, yes. And we just feel like at this point, you know, we've had a lot of challenges and the pandemic hit and challenges got worse. And we feel like they just didn't improve as much and really just are looking to, I guess the term would be, mutually separate and, you know, contract with a different vendor. And this would, if you were to approve it, it would be for the next school year. Okay? So that's, I guess, the ask. You know, what we did was because of the timeline, we went out and got estimates from different vendors. We reached out to all the vendors that bid on the initial bid. We did a bid. It was approximately three years ago. And we reached out to all the vendors that bid there. And we also reached out to the vendors that are doing our special out-of-district transportation that also do home-to-school. And we, you know, of the ones we reached out to, one of the ones that bid a few years ago in the Britain Transportation, they just, they weren't able to take, they didn't want to take on the work at this point. So they, you know, they didn't provide an estimate. We ended up basically with four estimates. One of them didn't include fuel. So we really just didn't even rank it into the rankings because, plus with the price of the vehicles, if we added fuel, it was probably going to be the highest cost piece anyway. And then, you know, we went, we talked to some of the towns that are, you know, using all three of the vendors that I'll call responsive to the estimates and got reference checks, which more or less, you know, they all pretty much checked out. And we really think that the specialty transportation would be the best fit at this point. They're in Avon, Guilford. They also are in, that's for home-to-school and special ed. They're also in New Britain and West Hartford primarily for special ed, both in district and out of district. Okay? And I'm trying to see. That's, I guess, the process. And we really didn't do the full RFP process because we didn't have it timewise. We knew we couldn't do it in time to make a change at this point for next year. So the logic was to get cost estimates and try to move forward that way.
Okay. So what is specialty doing with the proposed bid, whether their response to the bid going forward? What's going to be the change in the financial experience to the Board of Ed?
Okay, so the change, you touched about financial impact?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So if you look at the sheet with the blue and the yellow bar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I just did a couple of different analysis. The first one was just really to show you the three responsive, the top one, it says summary of transportation estimates, just to show you the, you know, the three that responded and the costs based on those three. The next section called detail of specialty transportation costs shows you the home-to-school costs and then the field trips and athletics combined. And that just gives you a layout of the annual increases over the, you know, from, if next year is year one, from year one to year five.
And next year, it shows on there that there is no increase because they're honoring what our price would have been with Durham because we were so far into this year's budget process and whatnot, we couldn't absorb an increase for next year. So they did agree to honor the existing contract negotiated rate for next year.
And then if you look at the lowest section there, it's really, you'll see the increases based on the existing contract. So the existing Durham contract and the increases in the, you know, over the next three years, it's a $977,000 increase to make this move. But it's a zero impact to the 22, 23 budget.
Okay. And why the urgency? Why now at this hour?
Well, just, we've had, experienced a lot of the late buses, really. And it's just a big impact to the students, to the families and to the staff also.
How about equipment for the new company? Do they have to gear up?
To procure buses. And they have found them, but they obviously will not put out a purchase order and buy them unless they have a contract. So after tonight, hopefully with a bid waiver, we could move forward with executing a contract where they can buy the vehicles to have them in time for the beginning of the school year, end of August, beginning of September.
All right. So there's vehicles available right now, but obviously another bus company could take those. So there's two different parallel conversations going on. You have, so Shipman and Goodwin, the board's attorney is looking to negotiate with Durham to come to a mutual separation agreement while at the same time having the replacement, excuse me, company lined up to do so. So, you know, given all that's occurred over the pandemic, you know, we don't see that the current arrangement is going to survive to the point of getting back at a level that it should be. So, you know, it's really in the board's interest to bring that to an end. And they're agreeable to have that conversation. And so those negotiations have been going on. So the timing is critical because no final decision can be made until such time as they know whether or not they have the bid waiver.
Thank you. Ready for the questions? Counselor Fishbein.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my initial thought was, why aren't we talking about this in executive session? Because we have an anticipatory breach issue here and we haven't resolved the contract with the underlying. So.
If we don't get a bid waiver, we stay.
No, I know, but we could have had executive session and then just authorized because it appears that you guys have undertaken certain aspects of this before.
I will defer to the lawyers in the room.
So, I mean, there could be an executive session at some point to talk about this. So the separation is being negotiated on behalf of the board by Shipman and Goodwin. Like I said, at the same time, we're looking to do a replacement. If we're not, if they're not going to be able to get a bid, they can't put it out to bid. So the options are, you don't have enough time. So the options are to just continue the relationship. Well, that is the option. So it's, we're in that position where if we can have the bid waiver, then they can finalize the end of the relationship with Durham. And that's kind of where we are.
Well, I understand. Just to, you know, protect the interests, I just would have expected we would have talked about this.
You know, the goal, the circumstances is that it's, the board has concluded that it is in the students, the parents, and the staff's best interest to come to a resolution whereby the relationship mutually ends.
I don't disagree. I just.
So with that comes.
There may be litigation over this issue.
Well, the goal is to resolve it in a mutual way that that does not happen.
But should it not? And there be a lawsuit for breach of contract because we do have a contract. Whatever is being said here can be used in that proceeding. So a choice was made. But anyway. We talked about the balance of the contract, but this new contract is anticipated to be five years.
That's because the existing contract was five years and there's three remaining years. For them to go out and leap and purchase these vehicles, they needed a five-year contract so that they could depreciate the vehicles and amortize them properly.
Understood. So it begs the question, what are the costs? Because I see escalating costs for the balance of the three years. But we have two years that I don't think are addressed in the document.
That's in the middle. That's the blue bar. So if you look at that middle section, that goes five years out to 2027.
So the blue bar is the escalating cost of the specialty contract? The yellow bar is the comparison of specialty to the Durham contract?
So the blue bar is five years? The yellow is for the next three comparing to Durham?
And obviously, we couldn't compare Durham for the last two years because.
So the yellow bar, I'm looking, okay, so the yellow bar underneath 2023, 2024 indicates the increase that was reflected in the current contract with Durham. Is that fair to say?
Correct. Specialty versus Durham, that 373.
Yeah, okay. So then when I look at up above the blue bar, that's the specialty contract. So it's the difference between it's 496 and change minus 373 and change, which is the actual increase.
Correct.
Result of this new contractual arrangement.
Correct.
Okay, got it now. Thank you. And I guess if we don't approve, you're stuck, right?
A little bit, yes.
With bad, well, I won't say. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you. This will be real quick. So as a parent of kids in school, I sort of understand why this is happening. So Janice, if, whatever the dissolution of the current contract comes to, is that something the council would have to approve ultimately? Or if it's within their.
No, if they negotiate a resolution where they agree to separate, it's really a board authority over the blessing.
That's it.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you. So the ones that you asked for estimates for, I assume you went out to them, explained what was going on, asked them for their estimates because there's not time to bid it, correct?
Well, what we did was we said, hey, if, you know, if we were to make a change. So that's, you know, that's the information we gave them. And we gave them some parameters as far as the vehicle routes and the types of vehicles.
Okay. And so the ones that you, there's one, well, there's one, two, three, looks like there's five others that you went for. Are those the only possibilities in the state, those five that you?
No.
Those were the only ones interested.
Those are the ones we reached out to.
Yeah, how did you know that the only ones interested, though?
In one case, there was a company that was not even, that bid it when Durham was awarded it two years plus ago. They didn't even want to bid. Mr. Marone, do you want to share the information about the neighboring town and who went out to bid?
Well, so I just, you know, as a baseline, we know that a community recently went out to bid and their increases were over 14, were 1 bidder and they had 14% every year annually. So typically, these. annually. So typically, these bids, when you go out to bid, you take a big hit in the first year because they do a price adjustment, and then it's like maybe a 3% or 4% sometimes. And, you know, they were 14% every year.
I guess my concern is just that if there are other options and we don't put it out to bid, then how do we know that we're getting the best deal?
They have no time to put it out to bid. I mean, you have, they've spent hours and hours and hours of not just dealing with the companies that could bid, but doing an analysis and going through the numbers with each and everyone. So, you know, the school busing situation nationwide, but it's a problem. I mean, I don't know, everywhere you drive, there's a sign, a billboard saying, "Looking for drivers." So, you know, the fact that another community got one bid, I mean, and that's it. So, you know, they've reached out to everyone, you know. I mean, obviously, not everyone.
Well, I guess that's what I misunderstood then.
We can't, we can't go out to everyone, but...
Well, but...
It's the, in order, if they don't, if we don't do a deal with Specialty at this point in time, then the opportunity for another comp, we can't put it out to bid because the buses, there's buses for sale right now, and if somebody else buys them, then you have a whole manufacturing problem, and they won't have them. So that is really one of the reasons that's driving the need to do it right now. Because every day that goes by, the possibility, those buses are not being reserved for that company. Some other company can take them. We all know how manufacturing is going right now. Whether or not they would even have the buses really becomes a major issue. I assure you, the amount of due diligence that Dominic has done and the superintendent have done to go through all of this analysis, I mean, they've talked to me on a daily basis, and I'm not even the main attorney that's involved in this. So they really have done their homework, and they've, have come to the conclusion that their best option is to sign a new agreement with Specialty.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not doubting that they did their due diligence. I guess my question still is, how do we, how do we know there's not another option that's cheaper?
Well, I guess what I would say is we're, there, I don't think there is, but if, even if there is, we're really, you know, we vetted these companies, and, you know, it's really about service also. So I think that, you know, I mean, that, you know, there's probably 20, 30 different companies that operate in Connecticut in some capacity. You know, we can't reach out to all of them. When we did go out to bid several years back, we got, we got four responses, and we reached out to actually five, you know, this time around. So I think, you know, we did, we did do some work there, and we also, you know, I talked to the other business managers, so I know what the prices are, and, you know, so I get a feel for what the costs are on the vehicles.
Sure, and I understand. It's nothing, you know, it's nothing against your worker. I just, this is difficult, it's a difficult decision for me, just because I, I understand you're in a predicament here, and this sounds like it's a good option, but, you know, we, we argue about bid waivers that are not a lot of money. This is $25 million over five years, and that, that worries me to not go out to bid on a $25 million item. That worries me.
This is something that we went out to bid for. We're only in the second year of the contract, and we obviously did award it to the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
And Durham was the lowest bidder by hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars each year.
It was about $800,000 a year.
A year, and we got what we were paying for. This is about service. This is about making sure that families have reliable transportation. This is about making sure students make it to school on time. The largest impact from the problems that we have with the buses is at the elementary schools. That's the end of the morning run. That's the end of the afternoon run. We have kids falling asleep on the bus. We have children in the winter hours getting off the bus, crossing streets in the dark. We are starting a breakfast program. If the kids aren't getting to school on time, they're not getting breakfast. We had to enter into an MOU with the teachers' union, asking teachers, trying to find teachers after they go through their COVID workday, which is trying in itself, would do stay after school and stay in the cafeteria and monitor children that their buses aren't here yet. We're splitting kids between classrooms, cafeteria, gymnasiums, to try and make sure that we keep students apart, but they have adult supervision, and then put them on a bus while Central Office is getting countless phone calls every single day. We have up to 40 runs, some days more, that they don't even get home on time. That's 40 robo calls going out to everybody that's on the bus route. This is much more than a financial decision. It is impacting the mental health of the families and students in our district. And as a Board, we feel compelled to do something about it.
Sure, I fully understand, and I know we've been hearing about it for a long time. But still, the concern is maybe there's another very capable company that's much less expensive. That's, so when you don't go out to bid, that's just always the concern. So I think what I heard Mr. Marone saying is that, or it might have been, it might have been you, I don't remember, that Durham was much less expensive, but it wasn't a good value because obviously we're in this mess. So is it your opinion that this maybe is not the cheapest option? Because we don't really know because we didn't go to bid, but you think this is the best option despite that?
Well, I guess it's the cheapest option. We got estimates on. I, you know, somebody could throw a number out there, but we don't have that number.
If we go out to bid, we may get something back that comes back with a flat rate, and everybody wants the price of fuel on top of it.
What I, what I will tell you is, we didn't get, you know, this is the, specialty came back at the lowest of the ones we got bids on. We didn't, there weren't any that were lower that we disqualified.
They were the only one that was willing to honor next year's rate in Durham's contract.
But the only one of the five.
Correct.
The only one of the 30 that are available. We don't know about the other 25.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Members of the public, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes, and thank you for your work.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Tatta?
Yes.
Testa? Chairman Sivoni?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Safe travels. There being no further business on the agenda, this agenda for this meeting, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we need to give government media some time to swap tapes or something. It's funny, the only thing I heard last night... All right, I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Town Council to discuss the budget for, it's still Tuesday, April 12th. We'll rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Allenson?
Yes, here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marone? Tatta?
Here.
Testa? Zandry? And Chairman Sivoni?
Here. All right. First up, public celebrations. Any, well, any questions for our Public Celebrations Committee Chair? Anything you want to tell us about your budget? Since you waited all night for this to start?
Well, I'd just like to thank you, the Town Council and the Mayor, for your very strong support the last two years in particular. We've had so many changes and omissions, and we've, we've worked very hard to restore the events, particularly Halloween and Christmas, or seasons of celebrations for the town. And your support has just been very, very much appreciated. I have increased our budget request this year because we are now able to do some of the things we've done in the past. And as you've heard in the few hours preceding my presence here, things have gone up as far as costs are concerned and whatnot. And we've also had the opportunity to take on some new activities for Halloween and seasons of celebrations in particular. And so we're looking forward to a good 2022 to 2023.
Excellent. Thank you for your hard work. I know you, your whole committee works hard and...
It's the committee.
Well...
It is.
But at the same time...
Well, thank you, but it's the committee.
Yeah, your leadership has been important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night.
Done?
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. And I want to thank Janice for helping me a number of times the last couple of years. Thank you.
Speaking of Janice and Attorney Farrell, the Law Department is up. Questions for the Law Department? Anything you want to tell us? Would you like to make a presentation? Okay. Well, we seem to have no takers. So thanks for sticking around. You guys had to be here anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Mayor's Office. Hey, Mayor, thanks for sticking around.
It's a pleasure. So, any questions for me?
Oh, Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I'm looking at the dues and fees line. It's $29,000. What does, what comprises that line?
Well, the, the, most of that money is the CCM, annual dues, $28,251. And then there's ADA Coordinator annual dues of $110. Joan Stave in the office is that coordinator for the, for the town. And then there's a conference that they hold typically, $90 registration for it. And the Quinnipiac Chamber annual dues are $1,030.
And the CCM portion, the $28,000, I think it was a couple of years ago, you decided not to be a member of CCM. Am I accurate there?
Well, a couple, a few years ago, we became members again. For a long time, we were not members.
And then agreed.
Mayor, the mic's not picking you up.
Yeah, for a long time, the town was not a member. And then, and they courted us, but we, we weren't members. And I believe it was their program for the, they had the...
Subscription drugs.
Subscription drug issues. So you had, we were able to provide a card to everyone in town, and they showed savings on it. I don't think we've gotten reports on that recently, at least I don't have them. But that's why we got back into it. And they are providing a lot of assistance. I know they do a lot of lobbying up at the Capitol and run programs and are of assistance to HR with regard to collective bargaining and, and what is happening around the state and some other subject matter, that kind of thing. Finance also receives reports from them that are helpful.
So I thought a couple of years ago, you had decided because of their position on the legalization of marijuana, that you were not going to be a member.
I was considering that. They did not, they, they did provide a vehicle for discussion of that issue and the differences of opinions. So certainly, that was appreciated. And they weren't, they weren't pushing it. But most municipalities just sat back and said, well, you know, we're, we're not going to get involved. So...
So...
They didn't take a position that I felt was wrong and that actually...